All right. In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers that this special meeting would take place on Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, at 7:30 PM via Zoom platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip P. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall was closed to the public for purpose of planning board meetings. A supplemental notice is given in addition to annual notice due to transformation of these meetings into remote virtual meetings. Supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio or video means. Access to this specific meeting was made publicly available via the agenda. Supplemental notice was also forwarded to the Item and Star Ledger, which publications are official newspapers for the township of Milburn. So tonight, our special meeting has one item on the agenda, which is namely continuation of application. Twenty zero zero seven, I have, but that doesn't sound right.
Yes.
It is. Okay. And so before we begin, I'm just going to allow Maggie Miggins to once again speak.
I have to recuse myself. Thank you very much.
Well, let me take attendance first.
Okay.
Okay, and then, okay. Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gessen Halper?
Here.
Jorge Mascherpiacho?
Yeah.
Mark Mattzel?
Here.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
Sanjeev Anayak?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Shreeni Vijay?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Iriam Salerno?
Here.
Chairwoman, Beth Doll?
Here. I'm telling you, I was so excited to let Maggie leave tonight. My fault.
So, enjoy the evening, folks.
Thank you.
I recuse myself. Thank you.
Yeah. Bye. Okay, thank you. So if we want to call in counsel.
You want to do the minutes first, or?
We didn't have them on the agenda online. I'm sorry. I took the one off the website.
I circulated the minutes of January 20th on like.
Yes, I did have them. Sorry, I just pulled the agenda off the Milburn Township website. I didn't know it was up there. Okay. Nice agenda. Sorry about that. I see you circulated. Oh, no, it's not on. Okay. I'm looking at it. Um. Sure. So the meeting minutes that you circulated from January 20th meeting?
Yes.
Right, yes, those you circulated two days ago. Those came on Monday. Um, and. Recused from that application. That was the continued, that meeting minutes were the continuation of this. This is, that was the last meeting on this specific application that we had. Did anybody have any questions, comments, or corrections on the meeting minutes from the 20th? Okay. Would anybody who was in attendance like to make a motion to approve minutes from the 20th?
I will make a motion to approve.
Mary, my, were you, yes, you were there. I'm sorry. That was.
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, it was the next one I missed.
Do you have a second? I will second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hey.
Hi.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting minutes from January 20th, 2021.
Okay, so now I need John Inglisino. And I believe Gary Dean.
Evening.
Good evening.
And Eileen is bringing in.
Right over here. Gary Dean, do you need anybody else?
Uh, Dave Minow?
Mm-hmm. You do need to, okay.
Great, okay. So welcome back. I believe this is your fourth time on this hearing that we're.
I think this is the number five on this one.
Number five, but I think number four that we're considering part of this testimony.
Yes.
Right, right. Um, so, so that said, we're continuing from, as I just mentioned, the January 20th meeting, which carried from 2020. And I welcome you to kind of kick us off and lead us into tonight's continuation. I believe you're going to begin with the architect where we left off, but I will allow you to start.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to you and the board and members of the public. Once again, my name is John Inglisino from the law firm of Inglisino Webster, Wichita Scala and Taylor, and we represent the applicant in this application, which is 85 Woodland Road, LLC. The Chair is correct that at the last meeting, we heard extensive testimony from Mr. Minow, who was the project architect. There were a lot of questions asked of Mr. Minow, but we also understood that members of the public had additional questions of Mr. Minow. And, you know, respectfully, I mean, we've been at this for a while, and we appreciate the opportunity to do so, and we want to certainly hear all of the questions that people have for Mr. Minow, but we have heard quite a few questions, quite a few questions were answered, and we certainly have no objection and welcome the opportunity to answer new questions with regard to his testimony, but we would appreciate it if the questions were questions that have not previously been, been, been asked. After Mr. Minow, then we have our traffic expert, Mr. Gary Dean, who will testify with regard to traffic. And Madam Chair, I think that's, that's as far as we can advance the proverbial ball, as they say, this evening. So without further ado, I'd like to call Mr. Minow as, as my witness. Mr. Minow, you understand that you're still under oath, correct?
I do.
And Mr. Minow, your license is still valid and your CV is otherwise unchanged from when you were qualified. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Madam Chair, Mr. Minow is here again to answer questions from the public, and again, we welcome that opportunity.
Thank you. Joe, I see you have a question here before we move.
Yes, I, can everybody still hear me?
We can.
Yes.
I think that, I think it was Mr. Minow who testified at the last hearing that the entrances into the parking garage were going to be outfitted with sound warnings as cars approach. But he also, as I remember, said that he was going to look into whether. I'm sorry, it was light that were going to blink when a car approached from the interior. And that he was going to look into the question of whether there was also available warnings that would be sound, sound warnings as well as light warnings. And I would like to ask you, Mr. Minow, if you've had the opportunity to check into that, and if so, what is the answer you received?
Yes, the, that's a good question. We have looked into the equipment for that, and it will include an audible warning as well as the visual.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I would offer you, Mr. Inglisino, the opportunity, you know, as you mentioned, there were many questions raised. We can proceed as you suggest, which is open back up to the public for any additional questions, or if there were like that specific example, other items which you have since addressed or have that, you know, might help answer a question before it's asked, per testimony given. If you prefer, we just continue opening up to the public, that's fine, and we can circle back to kind of questions that we still have open on our list.
I think we, I think that's, that's certainly our preference, Madam Chair, and I apologize, I did not mean to, or in any way mean to attempt to exclude the board from answering, asking questions. The board always has that right in that opportunity, and so I just wanted to make that clear. So if we may proceed, that would, that would be great.
Sure, no problem. Okay, so to members of the public, for anybody who had questions for Mr. Minow, the architect, based on what he was sharing back in January, that didn't have the opportunity to ask those questions. This is the opportunity for asking the architectural-based questions. There were some questions I know that were posed that we were told would be answered by Mr. Dean, who we're lucky to have here tonight. But any remaining architectural questions or questions on the testimony provided by Mr. Minow? Mark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a follow-up. At last, at the last meeting, Mr. Minow stated that the reason that, that his, that your developer would not be pursuing a LEED silver or gold status was because it was too costly. The question I have is, are you aware of all the subsidies available and rebates available when you're doing LEED? There's plenty of opportunities for that. We recently had a major project that's similar to yours, where they're going to, where they committed to do either LEED, gold or silver, and I was able to, you know, see from your website, like a whole suite of projects that you've designed that are LEED. And as you know, the return on investment is terrific, so you can charge more rent, the tenants benefit tremendously, the owners benefit tremendously because of, you know, the lower cost in utilities, the energy savings, and you know the whole route. You, you know, you've been doing LEED house, you know, LEED construction for a number of years, and I think that if it's good enough for Springfield, and it's good enough for Summit, and it's good enough for many of the other towns and cities that you've done LEED with. The question I had that I didn't receive an adequate answer is, why isn't it good enough for, for Milburn? And I believe that with all the benefits that you glean from that, and all the return on investment attribute, attributes, and this is well documented, as you know, through the U.S. Green Building Council and others, I'm exceedingly disappointed, and I didn't receive an adequate answer.
Well, that's a good question. And I think you might have misunderstood my answer in it being too expensive. We, we intend to do a sustainable green building to a standard that would be similar to a LEED silver building. What's too expensive about LEED is the actual fees that are paid to professionals and in tracking all the information that LEED requires. It costs the developer in fees with professionals, mostly mechanical, electrical plumbing, but also with the contractors, they have to track all their materials and trash and those types of things. So it's, it costs in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000 in fees to get the LEED plaque. What I was saying is that we are going to do a building that is similar to a LEED silver building. And it'll have all the aspects that you would find within a LEED certification without the actual applying to LEED. And the other thing that I think I made clear at the last hearing was, the developers still may choose to do that, but we can't commit in a zoning venue to LEED certification, because as you know, LEED certification doesn't come until approximately one year after, after full occupancy, because the way the, the Green Building Council certifies the buildings is that they come in post occupancy and commission the building based on the design standards that were in the actual plans for the building. So it's a, it's something that, from a real estate lender standpoint, if they see the commitment in the zoning approval for LEED certification, there's no way that they can lend on the building where that is up in doubt until a year after occupancy. So it's a difficult standard. We've negotiated these standards with various towns to, to be equal to, or whatever, to a LEED standard, and that's what I'm putting forth, that we're going to be equal to a LEED silver standard, but without the certification.
Yeah, it's the third, it's the third-party attribution that's really critical, because they're basically the check and balance that you, that you have indeed met those thresholds. And, and while I'd like to believe you, I, you know, I just know that if it's a LEED certified building, it's gone through that level of attribution. And I think this is substantial benefit to doing that, and this is substantial benefit to the developer because of the return on investment. You can basically charge higher rents, you can charge higher fees, people appreciate that, and in this age, age of COVID, knowing that you've got state-of-the-art HVAC and, and all the other attributes associated, the energy savings and.
If I, if I may, I think this is the, the, the opportunity to ask, simply to ask questions. There will certainly be a comment period later on, but this is just an opportunity to ask questions, and I would appreciate it if, if those that are asking the questions just ask the questions. They may not like the answer. They certainly will have the opportunity to make comments, but I think it's appropriate at this stage of the proceedings to just simply ask questions, and we'll, we'll answer.
Thanks, Mr. Inglisino. Okay. So, Mark, yes, I think your, your point and your question are both heard, and I understand that was, that was Mr. Minow's response to your question. Understood. Um, did anybody have, Mr. Bear?
Thank you. That is a question for Mr. Inglisino for counsel or for Mr. Minow. The last three or four meetings I've asked, and hopefully you've been able to find out what the construction phasing would be for the, for each phase, or what time period, how many months? Did he, but was we able to find that out? We, we will address, Mr. Bear, before the, the application concludes, we, I do have noted that you've asked that question a couple of times, and that question has come up in a few different iterations. We will be addressing in, in general terms, the, the duration of the, of the construction. But I would also point out that there will be a developer's agreement between the applicant and the township, which will address, you know, as is commonly done, construction-related issues. It will address the staging or, or phasing, however you want to word that, in, in detail. Candidly, that's not really, in my view, something that is really squarely before the board who is charged with reviewing the site plans, but I, I do think that we will, we do want to be responsive to your questions, so we are going to address it, you know, as best we can before we conclude the proceeding. Counsel, would that, would that developer's agreement also address construction, traffic? Yeah, I mean, typically it would, and I would think that that's something that the town would want to address. I mean, there were questions that came up during the hearing with regard to, well, during construction, what's going to be the impact on sidewalks, streets, traffic patterns, traffic flows, things of that nature. And, and that's just, that's, that's really not, especially if it was board, it is clearly something for the municipality, the engineer, and the construction folks who are going to be involved in that, and we would certainly expect the municipality to want to address those issues in the way it sees fit and appropriate in the, in the developer's agreement. Yeah, it, it, it is somewhat under the purview of this board, John, because it's, because the EIS was, was somewhat deficient. That's the reason why I was asking those questions for, for all this time, because in our ordinance, our ordinance specifically addresses construction impacts and mitigation. So, but if, if, if as a condition, if you guy, if, if the applicant is willing to prepare a developer's agreement or a construction plan, or whatever that is, which would address those things, I think that, that would be, that would go a long way. So. Yeah, and, and that would be a condition. I think your, your, the town would usually prepare that agreement. And some of the resolution, from a very practical perspective, some of those issues are actually addressed in the field. You know, where your folks may want to go out in, into the field and, and review those issues as having more specific input into the agreement. We would expect that process to unfold in this application as it does in similar applications. Thank you very much.
May I just respond, Madam Chair? I, I just wanted to clarify here that I don't do the developer's agreements for the township. That's done by the township attorney, but I do represent municipalities, and I'm familiar with developer's agreements. At least the ones that I have prepared over the years. Those kinds of issues are, are actually not addressed. They don't, they don't talk about those things. Most of the time, they are incorporated by things that are containing the resolution, which the applicant has to comply with. So I have to take issue with, with Mr. Inglisino about this, and I know it's been an important issue for, for the board, and I really don't want to see it fall through the cracks and, and to say, well, it's going to be handled with developer's agreements. And while I'm not familiar with Milburn's developer's agreements, I dare say that they probably do not address that. So I think it would be helpful for the applicant to at least generically address some of those things, so that when the resolution is incorporated as part of the developer's agreement, that issue is addressed.
Again, we, we can, but we're going to be, and I represent some municipalities that are more, I'll say, urbanized in, in terms of a downtown setting, where you have issues like that that do arise. My experience is different in that, in many instances, those kinds of issues are dealt with in developer's agreement. They do have to be dealt with. We could certainly say that as a condition, they would be addressed in, in the developer's agreement, if, if seen fit by the municipality, which I'm sure that it would be. I, I think we have, but certainly if not to your satisfaction, we can look at sort of what our concepts would be with regard to those issues. But, you know, candidly, we're going to be directed in many instances by your construction and, and safety professionals as to how that's going to evolve and what that plan is going to be. We're, we're not, we can't dictate to them. We're going to work with them, but obviously there are going to be public safety concerns during construction that are going to have to be addressed. Your construction official, public safety official are going to have, I'm assuming are going to want to have input as to how that plan is devised and how it evolves, and I think we would expect that to happen as, as part of the process. So I, I think we're going to be very limited as to what we can tell you is going to happen, but we can certainly, in a general sense, you know, I guess, you know, outline how we, how we would envision that it would happen. But understand, it's not something that we're going to be able to commit to, because we're, we're going to be guided by your, by your folks in the field as to what needs to be done. And I was, and if I could, if I would, I would, I. My recommendation is that the township and the applicant prepare a mutually agreeable developer's agreement, construction plan, that would regulate, specifically regulate construction traffic, as well as other, as well as other construction activities, and this would be agreed to by the, the particular departments within the township, those that control traffic and safety. That's what, that's, that's, in essence, what I'm looking for is part of the condition. And, and we would agree to that as a condition. We, we understand that we have to work with those folks to satisfy those folks, and, and that they're going to be actively engaged in that process. And we can certainly agree, unless my client tells me otherwise, that we can agree to, to that condition, that we would address those issues to the township's reasonable satisfaction in the developer's agreement. I know we, I don't, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Shreeni, go ahead, and I do see we have an attendee who has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, I just had a question for Mr. Minow, as it relates to getting in and out of the parking garage. I think one of the safeguards that you have put forward is, is, is the, you know, is the sound, sound warning. And, and I'm curious, just given the fact that we're so close to a school out there, and there are a lot of kids walking in that street, is there anything else you can do to sort of, you know, enhance the safeguard? Because we're also opposite a train track, and right now, you know, the traffic is pretty low because of COVID, but hopefully in the next few months, it becomes more normalized. So as train traffic increases, you know, the, the sound can get muffled, right? So what if somebody's, what if there's a train passing and somebody can't hear the sound there? I mean, it's a practical, it's a practical problem. And, you know, is there anything else you can do, like having this, you know, a speed bump?
It's not just the sound. It's, it's not just the sound. It's also a visual flashing element. But it's got both sound and a visual element to it.
Thank you.
Um.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Min, if I might? Mr. Minow, is that going to be on both the Chatham Garage openings and the Woodland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I see the first question from the public as from David Cosgrove.
We keep losing Sanjeev. I don't know if he's having trouble, but I keep losing him in video.
I agree. Okay.
But I need him to come back.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, we have David Cosgrove. There's nobody else from the board who has a question? No, okay.
No.
All right. Um, so David Cosgrove.
Okay, welcome, Dave. We can, you're in R, so if you unmute, we should be able to hear you.
Okay, can you folks hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, okay, very good. Thank you. David Cosgrove, and I'm at 99 Oak View. Sir, I want to pick up on some of your testimony from the January meeting. Chairwoman Zoh had asked you two questions, one about the configuration of the dens, and the other was a question on staging, and, you know, the protection of the school kids while construction's going on. Do you recall those questions just generally?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So as you were answering her question about the, the phasing to protect the children when they're going to and from school, you indicated that you received a text from a person you identified as the owner. And I'm wondering who that owner is that you got the text from? The name of the person?
I, I, I'm not understanding what, what the relevance of that question is, Mr. Buzak. So I would object to that question.
If, if we could, if we could get an answer first from this gentleman?
Well, then, then that defeats the purpose of the objection, so I would reiterate my.
Mr. Cosgrove, Mr. Cosgrove, if I might, what, what's the, what's the, what I'd call the proffer, you as a lawyer would know what that is. Why, where are we going with that, that question?
Okay, yeah, I don't mind telling you this. We have a witness who's, who's under oath, and someone's texting him answers to the questions while he's testifying.
Well, I think, sir, if, if you're asking questions about what something is going to be, and the, that, that's a discussion that would typically take place between the expert and, and his client to find out what it is, because there's a discretion, and the expert gets, gets the answer and conveys that. The applicant's bound by that. So I really don't care, candidly, who, who Mr. Minow is, is being prompted by or is getting his direction from. The resolution, if there's a resolution of approval or a resolution of denial, always includes a, a provision whereby the applicant is bound by the representations that the applicant and its professionals and witnesses made before the board, as if they were conditions of the resolution. So I'm not concerned that Mr. Minow doesn't have authority or apparent authority when he makes a representation in response to a question that's made, or that's, that's asked, and I think that's sufficient for our purposes. That's, that's all we're concerned about. I really don't care who he's talking, talking to. He's going to be bound by this, and the applicant's going to be bound by it. If they're not, then Mr. Inglisino, I'm sure, is going to jump up and, and make sure that that's, that's withdrawn from the record.
If I may.
Your substantive question.
If you're, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's all right. I'm finished.
Okay, if, if you may, I, I think you've completely. Okay, if, if you may, I, I think you've completely missed my point. We have a witness who's under oath and someone is texting him answers to questions. That's inappropriate.
I don't, I mean, I understand, again, I object, Mr. Cosgrove, Mr. Cosgrove is not asking a question. He's giving his opinion on what's appropriate and not. Again, this is an opportunity for questions to be asked. If folks don't like the answers, that's okay, but it's, it's, you know, this is our fifth evening of these hearings. And, you know, again, we, we have our witnesses here to answer questions. It's not, it's not a time to make statements or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Inglisino, and thank you, Dave. I appreciate that you have a question and you want to make sure, I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I would say it's not at all uncommon in, you know, an in-person planning board meeting for a question to be given of a, a witness and then them to say, oh, well, actually the guy who knows the answer is right behind me. And, you know, sometimes we have to call for some order. But I, I do appreciate what you're saying and thank you for that question. And I, I think they've, you know, not answered or answered as they will.
So, so I, I just want to know if it's, if it's your, if it's, if I may, your counsel's opinion that it represents no problem during a planning board meeting if someone is texting an answer to a witness while the witness is testifying and the person outside of that room, not under oath, is providing an answer that then is given to you?
Objection again, asked and answered now probably, you know, multiple times.
It's, it's, it's never been answered yet, sir, so don't, please don't say that.
I'll answer it again because I think it has been answered. And as I said, I, it doesn't matter from the board's perspective from whom the witness is drawing the information or inference from when that witness makes the representation on behalf of the applicant. And, and I dare say that many times witnesses with questions that relate to the applicant's issues as opposed to that particular witness's issues seeks guidance from his client as to what we're going to do here. And when his client says this is what we're going to do, the witness will say, this is what we're going to do. We're going to do A, or we're going to do B, or we're going to do C. And as, I'll repeat it one more time, it doesn't matter from whom or from what the witness draws the information to make the statement under oath. The witness is bound by that and the applicant is bound by that. And at the end of the day, that is all that this board needs to be concerned with.
Okay, I think we'll just, we'll disagree on that.
That's funny. And that, Mr. Cosgrove, was that your question?
Well, no, I have other questions that, that I, I just thought it was, I don't want to repeat what I said, but I, I just thought that there should be some, some protocol when a witness is under oath that he's not getting answers texted to him.
Okay, can, can we move on from that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, understood. And, and we can move on. Sir, how many, the, this building, a number of the apartment units are going to have balconies, isn't that correct?
You're near. That's correct.
Okay, and, and putting aside the Juliette-style balconies, how many units are going to have balconies that are, that the tenants can walk out onto?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I'd, I'd have to comb through the plans. I don't know the direct answer right now. It would, it would take me several minutes to do that. And I don't know what the, what the nature of the question is.
The, the question was very simple. How many balconies are there?
I, I, I gave you my answer. I don't know offhand.
Okay, but you did design this building and do the drawings and you don't know how many balconies, correct?
No, I do. I just have to open the plans and sit here for about 10 minutes and count the balconies.
I, I don't mind waiting.
Well, I, I object to that, Madam Chair. I, I don't know what the point of the question is. And, and maybe if Mr. Cosgrove could, you know, enlighten us with where he's going with the question, maybe there's some relevance to it. But candidly, on, on a building that does seek one minor variance for the step back, not related to the balconies, building conforms with regard to the balconies. I, I just don't understand what the relevance of the question is.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Cosgrove, I, I appreciate that you have a question and he hasn't given the answer to that specific question. I guess if there was, if you were going for a follow-up and you'd like to proceed and if he can't answer, then we can perhaps circle back. But I, I, was there a, a subsequent question after you know the number of balconies?
Oh, I, I probably have about 40 minutes for this witness, probably. And probably a lot more, given the fact that I can't get an answer, but I don't know if that answered your question.
Sort of, and I just want to.
Let's move forward and ask the questions as, as I think has been said. If you, you may not like the answer, you may not accept the answer, but let's move on so we can get as many questions answered as we can this evening.
Okay, I, I will move on to the next one, but you know, I, I do think Mr. Bouzak and, and Madam Chair, that if every time I ask a question,
Objection.
the witness is going to, please don't interrupt me, sir.
This is becoming.
If every time I enter, if every time I ask a question, he's going to tell me he doesn't know the answer or he doesn't want to spend a couple of minutes trying to find it. You know, it, you might as well not even ask questions.
Understood. I guess as long as they are echoing what Mr. Bouzak said or what Mr. Inglisino.
Madam Chair, if I might, I, I, I do object to this, to Mr. Cosgrove, who has asked numerous questions, now saying he needs 40 minutes to ask questions of this witness on a, a fully conforming architecturally, there are no variances. There's no deviations with regard to the architecture. Mr. Minnow has testified in detail with regards to these plans. These questions, I think, fairly evidence a desire to filibuster here, Mr. Cosgrove's part. They don't want to deny him the ability to ask questions. But candidly, based upon what I'm hearing this evening, and I think that I am expressing an accurate view, that these questions are not, are not motivated by curiosity or by any concern. They're motivated to take up time and.
Mr. Inglisino, I, I appreciate your comments, I, I do. But, but we're going to spend more time arguing as to whether the answer's adequate or not than asking the question and getting an answer. So why don't, why don't we move on and let's see where this goes. Mr. Cosgrove, please ask your next question and, and try to avoid any comments. If you don't, if you're not satisfied with the answer, you can, you can ask a follow-up question.
I will do that, but please, please, I, I did not make any comments other than when I was asked for.
Okay.
I've asked questions that haven't been answered.
Let, let's move on.
Sir, let's look at the, talk about the rooftop deck that is going to be on the side of the building that faces the arboretum. Are you there as far as that reference goes? That particular deck?
Yes.
Okay, so now what's, what's going to be on top of that deck as I'm standing on the deck? What, what's a pertinent, what's going to be built on top of that roof that's part of that deck?
Again, I object. This has been asked and answered repeatedly. Mr. Minnow gave extensive testimony and answered these questions at the last hearing. This is just a repeat of what we have already listened to in a way of testimony.
Right, Mr. Cosgrove, we, we definitely, I know we did discuss that and did have testimony to that effect. And I, I know you were at that meeting. I guess I, I want to allow you to ask a question without being, you know, shut down every time. I just want to, new questions would be the direction we want to go.
He did not testify about the dimensions or anything on what's on the deck. Let's, let's talk then about, that's fine. I, I guess I'm not going to get to ask any questions, but that's another side issue. Sir, how, how, how many chairs are going to be on the roof on, on the deck that faces the arboretum? That was never asked.
You know, again, I, I, these questions, I don't understand the relevance of these questions. As many chairs as people want to put out, that's appropriate. I, I don't know what, what the relevance of that question is.
Mr. Inglisino, I, again, I, I appreciate your, your concerns here. But, but I think let's, let's get the questions answered to the extent that we can get them answered. You know, I can come up with, with at least two reasons why that question may be asked. I don't know why it's being asked, but I can come up with two reasons why, why it may be relevant. So why don't we just move forward? Please exercise some patience here and I can assure you that the chair will be able to control this meeting in a way that it's efficiently and effectively conducted and we move forward to get this application to its conclusion and before the board for a determination.
Thank you. So, Mr. Minnow, I, do you have any testimony regarding the number of chairs on that?
I don't know the exact number, but I, I did testify as to the occupancy being limited on that deck. And I, it was 35 or 36. I could bring up the drawing where we had the chart and tell you exactly.
Where, where are the, where are the fire exits if you're standing on that balcony facing the arboretum? If, if there's a fire, how do you get out?
There's one back through the building to the fire stair in the building. And then there's one to the fire stair that comes up through the roof.
Okay, and, and those are, and, and your testimony, those doors are both going to be locked by some type of magnetic interlock?
They, they will be after hours, yeah.
Now, you gave some testimony about there being a, a, a person that's going to, a building manager, I guess is what you used as the term, but I, I think it's really someone that was going to be at the front desk. Is that correct? Do you remember that generally?
Is there, again, is there a point to that? There was extensive testimony with regard to.
There is a point to it. Would you stop interrupting me?
I, let's, please, let's speak respectfully in this meeting. So.
I have a right to object.
An answer to the question. Mr. Cosgrove asked a question if there's, if there's going to be a, a full-time, I guess, first employee at, at the desk.
You want me to answer that question?
If you can, please.
I think our testimony last time, and it still stands, is that we are going to have people from the management staff in the building on a daily basis.
What hours are the daily basis when you say that? From what hour to what hour? What time in the morning to what time at night, please?
Objection that it was asked and answered. There comes a point in time where, when there was extensive testimony on this issue and these direct questions have been asked and answered, to have Mr. Cosgrove come back again at the next meeting and just ask these questions over again. It's prejudicial to my client. It's prejudicial to this process. And I, I object and I implore you and/or the chair to do something about it because it's not right. It's not appropriate and I want my objection on the record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cosgrove, you, you've had the floor now for about 20 minutes. I, I know you, you, there's been discussion and dialogue. I, there are other attendees who have questions and I see there's other members of the planning board who have questions. So can I allow you time for one more question? And then let's go to other questions and see if any of yours remain unasked, which we have done in the past. So I would just like to try to spread around the, the question, questioning time.
Okay, that, that's fine, but, but I, but I, I would like to respond to Mr. Inglisino's comment just briefly. I listened to, I listened to the last meeting and the time, the time that this person's going to be working that front desk was not testified to.
Again, object.
So. All right, so I, I'll ask a different question, you know, and. Sir, where, where is the, 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 the proposition that you folks have, have put forth is that there be two roof decks on top of this building? And my question is, where is the closest building of similar size and proportion that has a rooftop deck?
Objection on the basis of relevance. The applicant is not seeking variance in this regard. The roof decks have been testified to at length and I, I believe that as a, the question is completely irrelevant. I have to put my objection on the record.
Mr. Minnow, you, you may answer the question.
Could you repeat the question?
Where is the closest building to this building that has two rooftop decks on it?
I, I don't know the answer to that. And as Mr. Inglisino said, we didn't research that. There's no reason to research that. This project is permitted in its current size and configuration.
On the courtyard that's proposed with this development, are there any gas grills or fire pits in the, in the, in the, on, on the ground level?
No.
Proposed?
No.
Okay, and why not?
A, a, a objection.
We're not going to get into that. The answer is no. You know, let, let's move on.
Mr. Cosgrove, I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you pause here and, and hold your questions. If you, if we have time, you will be allowed to ask them. It's just I, I would like to allow others to have some, some opportunities. So we'll, we'll have you hold for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I saw Sanford Kimmel, a member of the public. And in the meantime, I, I thought I saw Sanjeev. Did you have a question? You were raising your hand or?
Well, just to tell her. Questions where I did not have the answers in the past. That's why I raised the hand. I did not want to intervene, but some of the questions that was asked by Mr. Cosgrove, I felt that was question for information. If the applicant or, or the Mr. Angsalano thinks that everything is being done with the confirmation and the ordinance has everything, he doesn't even need to come to this planning board or to the public meeting. So any questions, or every question to be objected is also not fair. There are some questions which I understand you have mentioned, Mr. Bouzak has mentioned as well, but not the way it has been going. I don't think that all the information was shared earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Comment. Okay, Mr. Kimmel, you should be with us now.
Do you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Um, at the last meeting.
I, I apologize. I should have said this. It's my fault. Could you state your name and address for the record? I apologize.
Oh, sure. Sanford Kimmel, Seven Briarwood Drive, Short Hills.
Great.
At the last meeting, there was some discussion about the distances relevant to the sound travel from the, the roof to various residencies, both on, on, on the opposite side of the track. I don't believe there was a statement made as to the closeness or the distance to the houses on Holbarth Drive. And I went up there and looked on Google Maps and I'm no expert, but it is my personal opinion that the distance to the rooftop from several of the houses running across the street on Holbarth, across the tracks was closer. Can you confirm or contest that?
The houses there are closer. I think the relevant answer that we gave last time is that we'll be conforming to the township and the state's sound ordinances for this project.
I mean, I contend that the sound is, the, the distance is closer and being the elevation, looking down on the top of the rooftop, those ten, those residents who live in those homes are going to hear any party that's going on with any high level of, of noise.
Yeah, there, there is a, with, with respect to the topmost roof deck, there is another story of building between the roof deck and the houses on the other side of the train tracks. So there's a blockage of a full story of a building there. I'm not saying that that is going to stop all sound, but I'm just saying. And then the deck that's in the middle courtyard sits down lower and there's two floors of building between that and the homes that sit on the other side of the train tracks.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Jorge, I see you have a question and after Jorge, well, let's go with Jorge's question to see how long it. After Jorge, well, let's go with Jorge's question to see how long it.
Oh, yeah. So I I'm very confused here because the first time when we talk about the roof deck, there was no fire pit. In the second meeting, there was fire pit. Now, in this meeting, there is no fire pit. So there are so much contradiction in the formation. So. Do we have fire pits in the roof deck or we don't have it? Because there was.
The question, the question, the question for Mr. Cosgrove was on the ground floor courtyard. Not the upper roof decks, but on the ground level, do we have fire pits and grills? The answer is no. On the upper level roof decks, the answer is yes.
Which one is the upper level?
That hasn't changed. That hasn't changed.
Mr. Minnow, would it be helpful as you answer the question to maybe show an image just to clarify? I I don't know if you could do a screen share just to answer Jorge's question because if if he sees where you're pointing, it might. I I don't know if you're able to do that. Or or somebody on your team, if they could share that, I think, just. Okay, sure. Thank you.
So I have a second. It's not his question, but. And based on what Mr. Inglisino said about the question that the participants are doing here that does irrelevant. I have to remind you that our showing code, the point five oh nine point two, say that the building, they we have to show that the building has a relationship with the neighbor. The 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 buildings next to it. So when the the previous participant asked about. What is the closest building that has similar scale? It's an important question. It's not irrelevant because it's based on our zoning ordinance that every building has to fit. Our neighborhood. So I don't see why that was objected that question. That was just a comment.
I I didn't hear quite all of your question, but let me try to answer the question about the grills. So the question I got from Mr. Cosgrove, I believe, was about the lower level courtyard, which is. Real close to the street level of Woodland Road. In that courtyard, there are no fire pits, no grills. There are fire pit, there are grills and fire pits on the mid level deck and the upper level deck.
Okay, thank you.
And then I believe if I can paraphrase what Jorge's follow up question that I think you you didn't understand and Jorge, correct me if I'm wrong, is just. Understanding the context of this building and neighborhood character. Is that where you are?
That is based on our zoning ordinance. It's not something that we're just making up now. Our zoning ordinance said that every building has to represent the character of the town.
Right, do you?
Is that a question?
It's not a question. It can be. I actually, I would like to, you said that you don't know the answer, so I'm not going to ask the question again.
Well, I I don't know. Mr. Minnow, do you understand the question?
I I I don't really.
Okay. I I don't I don't think respectfully that he's saying he won't answer the question. I think Mr. Minnow is saying that he doesn't understand the question.
No, no, no. He said in the previous question from the. And one of our residents, they asked him about the. Which one is the closest building in similar scale to this one? That was the question that somebody else did. And you, Mr. Inglisino, said that that was an irrelevant question because you didn't see the point of that question. And I remind you that part of our zoning ordinance said that every building has to represent the character of the town. So is that question, it was a very important question. I did a similar question before and I didn't have the answer. Neither. So I'm not going to ask the question again, so we don't waste time.
Right, but I I think this is a legal response. I mean, this is a, this is an affordable housing. It's an inclusionary project that was carefully. Designed and planned by your governing body as a as a settlement. With the applicant. And. Our view legally is that. Of that our obligation, if you will, which we have, I think this. Hearing has borne out. As has fulfilled what the settlement agreement provided for and.
Are you are you an architect, a urban designer, a urban planner to answer that question? Because that is a very specific question for the designer of this building. How this building represents the character of the town. We understand that we don't have enough affordable housing, and this is great. I love the idea to have affordable housing. But the question was about how this building, based on the aesthetic of the building fits in the neighborhood. And when the previous question was about the scale of the building, that is a very important question. That's it. I don't want to keep going here. We need to finish this application, I hope, today. So let's let's move on.
Thank you, Jorge. And. I see that Jean Pasternak has her hand raised.
Hi, Jean, if you are able to.
I finally got to unmute. Okay. Yes, Jean Pasternak, three four two Hobart Avenue. I have questions that follow from the previous meeting. I have not attended every hearing, so. I'd like to just speak on behalf of those residents and taxpayers who may not have heard all the testimony. Do have the right to ask questions. And I don't really appreciate the chilling effect of some of the commentary of attorney. What is Inglisino? It makes me feel unwelcome. I must say that. I'd like to ask the following questions. At the last meeting, I remember someone made the comment that this is a, these are luxury rental units. Could someone define the term luxury?
Respectfully, that's not a question that. I don't believe Mr. Minnow testified to, although Mr. Minnow, you can. Answer it if you'd like.
It was stated several times throughout the hearing. Think the these units were referred to as luxury rental units.
I I think the term is a state of art. It's. With the exception of the twelve affordable units, the renters in this building are what I would call renters by choice. Because of the rent levels that'll be charged here. These are people who are decide, it's not the cheapest rental project that's in the region. And people will decide from a lifestyle standpoint to live here. And I think I talked originally about. Two major groups that we anticipate that being one of empty nesters and the other would be. Young, mostly childless, younger professionals. Who were starting out. And living and working in the area.
Okay, thank you. That that clarifies that. So your testimony is that your. Your expectation is that it will be mainly empty nesters and young, mostly childless. Young professionals that would would. Adopt the. The non affordable units. Rent them, sorry.
Well, I'm not sure I'd call it not affordable units.
I'm sorry, the not not. You know what I mean.
Sorry, I understand. Now, I understand that if you were seeing me, I'm smiling. And they made that response.
Thank you for clearing that up. So then I guess what I'd like to understand, given that that this is defined as a luxury rental building. With luxury rental units. I thought it was stated the last hearing that the building management is not planning to have a resident manager nor a manager after five to six P M. I think that was what it was stated. Yet I'm hearing, yes, their plans for several rooftop interior. Gathering spaces, a gym. Other common amenities that will be open well after those hours. So my question is, why is i- is is there a plan to? Have someone on site to be managing that building to a luxury standard with all those amenities, rooftops, et cetera?
I don't think that's an architectural question, but.
And and just to recap, I'm going to recap prior testimony was that there would be onsite management during business hours. There would be a twenty four seven call number for residents in in need of. Of management assistance. The applicant agreed to certain restrictions with regard to people permitted on the rooftop deck. With regard to the fire pit operation and with regard to the locking of doors. Which it could do via FOB. All of that testimony is in the record and was very thoroughly discussed at the last meeting.
I think it was discussed, but not as thoroughly for me anyway, to really have a full understanding. Because I guess what I'm trying to do is connect the dots between a statement that this is a luxury rental building. Yet there will not be a manager on site twenty four hours for a sixty two unit building. And I think that's what I'm hearing, correct?
I I think that what you've heard is is that there will be onsite management essentially during daytime hours and that there will be. Twenty four seven call number for residents to contact management if need be. And that the applicant will agree to the restrictions. That are on the record with regard to the limitation of the rooftop deck and so forth. So I I mean, that's the that's the testimony and.
Thank you.
We we re- we reiterate that.
I'd like to move on. In terms of the gym. I have a couple of questions. What is the occupancy planned? Who will be allowed to use it? Who will operate it? Can it be subcontracted to, you know, a non related to the building management or owner? Operator? And could it ever be run independently and will it include ever non residents using the gym?
In terms of occupancy, it would be limited to about ten or fifteen people at a time. And that would be a lot for a sixty two unit building for them all to be. At the gym at one time. It would never be. Given out to a commercial operation. It would never be used for people who don't reside in the building. It's for residents only. Was there any other questions you had?
Well, Mr. Booth, I just add that the applicant will agree as a condition that the gym will be for the use of its residents only.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to ask a little bit more just about the dens. I know this was covered, but I really don't feel clear on it. It was a testimony just two seconds ago about how, you know, empty nesters and young, mostly childless professionals would be. The target audience for these for these units, but. The dens came up as a possibility of adding bedroom space. What was the answer as to how or why that was felt not to be the case in in this in this building, that they would not be used as bedrooms?
Well, again, as I just recap what the applicant agreed to at the last meeting.
Okay.
One, there won't be any closets in these rooms. And two, they will stipulate as a condition that they will not be used as bedrooms. Three, they've indicated that they would put a prohibition against the use of the dens as bedrooms in their leases with the individual tenants.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to know, will there be an outdoor sound system on any of the roof decks?
No.
Can there be a resident? Installed sound system?
No.
Well, let's be clear what the question is. When you say sound system, and you say installed, do you mean a? A a system that's installed into the into the building or do you mean?
Would anybody be permitted to put anything up there that would allow for, you know, loud music? I don't care what form it takes. You can call it whatever you want, but would that be a possibility? Will that be allowed?
I think I think the testimony was that the applicant will abide by the noise ordinance. Of of the town and and the state, which are, I assume the same since the state preempts. The localities with regard to the noise ordinance, and and that's our testimony.
Okay, I I guess I have a comment sort of question, but. Having been to just about every township committee meeting in the last several months. One thing that I learned just at last night's township committee meeting is that the closed session minutes. Had never been approved going back to January of two thousand sixteen. So they were approved. They will be available. At the moment, they're unredacted, so. Members of the public who wish to review those meetings. Will will not be allowed to do so until they're unredacted. So. Until they're redacted, sorry. So I know there was a comment made somewhere along the lines about how there could potentially be some. Information contained in those minutes that would give us insight as members of the public as to how this rooftop deck. And other issues that were not disclosed prior. By by anybody to to the members of the public until, you know, more recent hearings. That that didn't allow for sufficient, you know. Public input earlier on in the project development. I think that I'm troubled by that. I have to say that. I think it it shows a lack of transparency. It does not help with the buy in from the community to not have had those those minutes approved and available. And I just want to know. If anybody, you know, Mr. Minnow or anyone else would like to comment as to. How we will be able to have that information prior to moving forward with this project.
That that's not an issue that's appropriate for the applicant to comment upon.
Thank you. Agreed. So thank you, Jean. That. I think that's more in line of a comment and and we hear it, I think. But thank you for raising that issue. I I don't know that anybody on this board knows the answer you're speaking about. Township Committee notes, but. Point taken. So thank you for your questions and.
That's it.
Move to a few others. And. I see BB has a question and then also Deborah Nemus, who will do subsequently. Okay, BB, you should be in now if you unmute.
Okay, am I in? Sorry, I guess you're not missing much if you can't see me. Can you hear me?
Right, we can hear you. Yep, just say.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sure, thanks. Um, okay, Beatrice Shear, one oh one O Q Terra. Sorry, I'm not very good in light. This this might be a question for Mr. Inglisino. I I you you've mentioned.
BB, just to just to confirm that this, at this point, we're asking questions of the architect only.
I'll ask the architect, okay. When when was the second rooftop planned? You're the architect. You plan things. When was the second rooftop planned? It is not present in the Phillips memo. They talk about one landscaped. A rooftop above the top level of parking. So since it's not, wasn't in the Phillips memo. And Mr. Lanza Fama didn't know about it when he testified on September twentieth, I would like to know, when was it planned?
It was in the planning all along, but it didn't get added to the plans until after that September, late September meeting.
Well, how could it have been in the planning all along when it wasn't?
Because we were working out the design and how the how we were gaining access to it. Where specifically it was going to be located, the exact size and how the fire exits.
And and. Why? Why was it never disclosed to the public when this project was being considered by the Township Committee?
I don't know.
And. I I. Also like to ask you, I have some concerns about the fire hazards from from the decks, especially the one next to the arboretum. Um, you're aware of the of the Fire Marshal's statement. In his memo to the planning board that a fire apparatus access road must be installed and maintained for the length of the rear of the building. Are you aware of that? That the the access road to for for fire equipment must be in charge. That would be between the rear of the building and the. That the access road to for fire equipment must be in charge. That would be between the rear of the building and the arboretum. Are you aware of that?
Mr. Minnow, you you are on mute if you were speaking. I couldn't tell if you are, so you're.
Sorry. I am aware of the comment of the Battalion Chief.
It's not a comment. It says it must be installed.
Monsieur, Monsieur, Monsieur.
Oh, I thought he was.
Monsieur, Monsieur, please just slow down. You'll have adequate time to ask a question. Ask a question. Make sure Mr. Minnow has completed his answer and then you can ask another question.
Right.
We're just not going to get it. So so just wait one moment. Mr. Minnow, have you completed your answer?
Well, this was addressed by Mr. Lanza Fama in his testimony, but her question was, was I aware of the comment? And the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Um, so I would like to know if the Fire Marshal has approved the grills, especially on that plaza level on that deck you are planning next to the next to where that road should be, but my understanding is will not be. Net right next to the arboretum. Has the Fire Marshal been approved these grills? In fact, any of any or all of the grills on the rooftop decks that are planned, the two rooftop decks that are planned, has the Fire Marshal been consulted?
I know. His comment in his in his memo is that open flame cooking devices and outdoor fireplaces and pits must be operated in designated areas as per the approved construction plans. And we don't have approved construction plans. And he also says that those those elements must be operated, must not be operated within five feet of combustible construction. And we would abide by that. And we would show that on our plans.
Okay, so before the instruct, will will the Fire Marshal's approval be, will that be obtained before the construction plans are approved?
Yes, I mean, when we finish construction drawings after we receive approvals, he will be a part of that review, part of that township review.
So so what I'm hearing is you're going to get your approvals and then you'll see if it's all right with the Fire Marshal? When will you get the, when will you? Let me finish my question. When will you seek the Fire Marshal's approval for the fire pits and the grills?
I just read you his statement to us that said these devices need to be shown on the construction plans. And he will receive the construction plans when the construction plans are done. And he will evaluate them. And he gave us his requirements of these elements need to be not operated within five feet of combustible construction. And we will abide by that.
I'm still not clear as to what you are saying. What you you will, you're let me, let me, let me state my question again. And you're just reading back to me information that's already on here. My question is, when? When are you going to seek the Fire Marshal's approvals for?
Monsieur, with all due respect, I think Mr. Minnow answered that question adequately. He said that they will be, there will be construction plans submitted to the Construction Department. Those plans will also be reviewed by the Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal will make any comments, approve or disapprove those, ask for modifications and so forth. And ultimately, the only way that these can be installed would be consistent with the Fire Marshal's stamp of approval, for lack of a better word. And that will be done when the construction plans are submitted to the Construction Department. And I think, Mr. Minnow, have I misstated anything that you've stated?
No, you have not misstated.
Okay, thank you. Monsieur, your next question?
Yes, so I just want to go over a couple of things, just to be perfectly clear. If if we I'm sitting at my house, which is right next door to your your building, you're the building, you're building. And the aroma of marijuana comes wafting off of your roof towards my house, which is going to be perfectly legal. Now, the police are not allowed to even, my understanding from reading the paper is the police are not allowed to even approach teenagers who they who are just because of marijuana smell and odor. So the police will not be able to go up and do anything about it. What will, what can I do about that wafting off of your rooftop?
Objection, that's not a question for Mr. Minnow.
Well, who's it for?
It's for law enforcement. It's not a question for.
No, no, I'm talking about what will your building do about it? Who is that question for? What your building will do about it?
Will.
Or is the answer nothing? Maybe the answer is nothing.
If the answer is, I mean, if you're, if the premise of your question is that there is a legal activity occurring on the property, then I don't understand what would our building do about it? I guess.
Accepted. The neighborhood should accept.
Monsieur, please, just have a little patience.
And I guess.
Answer.
I guess the observation should also be made that if people in the neighborhood are smoking marijuana and people in our building are smelling it, the same thing would be true. So the law is the law. We don't, we don't make the state law. We will abide by the state law and we trust that others will as well.
You've said that smoking would be prohibited. That would include smoking marijuana. So what so what would you do about it?
Now, I'm checking with my client. I think we did. I believe.
The testimony was, I believe, Mr. Inglisino.
Yeah.
Be no smoking on on any of the outside roof decks.
Right, so.
That's correct.
That's correct. So if there was smoking, which would be in violation of the approval, then I would expect that somebody could make a complaint to the zoning officer or and or make a complaint to the management of the building and they would rectify that situation.
And how about how long would it take them to rectify it? The zoning officer, I don't think is going to help us. How long will it would it take? How how long could the neighbors expected to take for that situation to be rectified?
I mean, I couldn't possibly answer that question.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Minnow, I have one follow-up question as we, Deborah Nevis will be our next member of the public, but I had a note, or maybe it's from Mr. Inglisino, but that that you were regarding the question on dens, which we heard again asked tonight, that you were going to share a conceptual plan with us. Which you had.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I didn't hear you.
You would share, I'm sorry, a conceptual plan of the of a typical layout, including one of the apartments with a proposed den. Just for the for the sake of the board to understand how that might look. That was something that was offered at the January 20th meeting?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. We didn't receive it yet, but that's not something that you have available for showing tonight.
Or or do you?
Or do you? Yeah, when you say you could share it, yeah.
So I thought that these were submitted, but we do have them as exhibits tonight.
They should have been.
Was this? Yes.
You did receive them.
Okay, thank you.
The plan on the left is a typical two-bedroom unit. And right here, you see the den location. And our front door is here. There's a laundry closet there. This is the line of a drop ceiling. And this is the den. There's no closet within the den. And then on the one-bedroom unit, typical one-bedroom, we have a front door here. We have a pocket door for the den and there's no closet in the den itself.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for walking us through that. And the second question.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I don't know if we marked that as an exhibit. And if we didn't, we should do that. So we have it in the record. So Mr. Minnow, if you can just put that back up for a second, we're on, according to my notes. We're on A37. So this is titled a typical unit plan with the lot and block of the property. Is there a date on there, Mr. Minnow?
Yes, it's February 11, 2021.
Okay.
Sorry, can I just ask one quick follow-up question while you have it open? So you said the one-bedroom has a pocket door. It looks like there is no pocket door or door on the den in the two-bedroom. Is that just an opening or what is that?
Yeah, this is a closet. We have it. We think we're going to probably put a pocket door in this for privacy right at this location. In this floor.
Thank you.
What's a pocket door?
Pocket door.
Can you explain, Mr. Minnow, what a pocket door is for the? I think somebody.
Slides in into a wall.
Thank you, sir.
So wouldn't that be a closet?
No. This closet faces the foyer, does not face the den. And there would be a door to close off the den if somebody was working in there having a Zoom meeting. They want to close the door. They could pull the door out of the wall and close that off for privacy.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Mr. Minnow, my other follow-up question is regarding the facade. And I don't know if you are able to share a view along Chatham Road. So the facade treatments of how it appears from the street. Great. No, it's the other side of the, yeah, that's the one with the dips, I think, is the Chatham roadside. Well, okay. I mean, along woodland. I'm sorry, I'm saying the wrong road. That's not helping you. The one where it steps down. That's woodland. Thank you. So in understanding the use, the first floor above the parking level, I believe, to the left portion of this, if you could show where's the proposed Summit Medical Building? Or actually, just please, if you could just move your cursor, okay, up that way. Great. And so is that facade intended to look similar to the residential, but like it, would it look from the street as though it is similar to the residential or would it have a different treatment? It's just, it's hard to tell, obviously, with the the brick, but would it would it have a different look is my question. Mr. Minnow, you're muted. Mr. Minnow, we're not hearing you.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. It's 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 actually clear to see it on the Chatham roadside. The materials are all the all the same along this frontage. This is the Summit Medical Group on Chatham. And you see how it matches the rest of the building above.
Right, so it has the essentially, it has the appearance of looking to the untrained eye, just kind of like all the same apartment style. Is that?
With the exception of the entryways to the building, they have a little bit more commercial feel, double door feel, you know.
Okay, great. And has Summit Medical Group been consulted in this style as they're your intended occupant? Okay. Thank you. Yes, Don, do you have a question about these plans? Is that why you're raising your hand? No, you were.
I don't know what I'm doing here with the controls. It was actually a follow-up to one of Miss Shear's questions.
Okay, okay. So thank you. I don't think I see anybody else's hand raised on this one. Okay, thank you for sharing. Okay, so Yes, Don, why don't you ask your follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just just had one question about the fire access in the back. And I'm not sure if this has been answered, but is it your understanding, Mr. Minnow, that they intend to get a fire truck behind the building?
No. I think it was answered that there would be the ability for fire personnel to get a ladder on a walkway around the building. But it's it's a practice in almost all locations in New Jersey that during a fire event, fire companies don't bring their million-dollar fire trucks within a matter of feet, a few feet of the building. They do, they basically keep their vehicles on the street and they do what's called a drag and pull operation with the hoses. And because this building is fully sprinkled, even the garage areas, that there's not as nearly the hazard from a life safety standpoint as there would be in another type of building.
Okay, so do you do you know what is actually intended for the access? Is it just going to be the path behind the building?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, apologies. We can bring in Deborah Nevis. Sorry for that, making you wait, Deborah. Okay, you should be in now.
Hi, can you make?
We can, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I just had some.
I'm sorry, can I ask you to state your name?
Deborah Nevis, 65 Nolan Road in Short Hills. Just a couple of follow-up questions to some of the stuff that's been asked tonight. I appreciate that the gym is going to be for residents only. Does that also exclude SMG from using the gym potentially? Like, say they get Northopedia Stan, who has a physical therapist and who wants to use some of the gym facilities. Will SMG also be prevented from bringing clients or patients into that gym facility?
Yes, they would be prevented from that. That's not it's not available to Summit Medical Group.
Okay, great. And then I also had a question about, you know, that the I hear that the dens are going to be in leases not being usable for bedroom space. But, you know, people mess with their lease agreement. So I'm just wondering how that's actually going to be enforced? Like, how are you gonna prevent people from using those dens as bedroom spaces? Closets aren't necessarily, you can put an RMR in a space. So how is that going to happen?
John, do you want to take that? That's a legal question.
Well, again, I indicated what the applicant has agreed to in terms of conditions with the board on a resolution. If there are any other conditions, you know, that the board or its professionals can think of that would further enforce that, the applicant would certainly be willing, you know, to listen to that. The reality is, is that, you know, it's going to be a prohibition in the lease. It's going to be in the resolution, assuming a resolution of approval. And we know there will be no closets. I can't frankly think of anything else that the applicant can agree to or do. You know, but again, if there is something, we would certainly be willing to listen because there these areas will not be used as bedrooms.
I mean, maybe not putting pocket doors in and just leaving them open so that people can't. so that people can't shut a door and make it more bedroom-like.
We would not do that because the den functions, people want privacy and quiet in their den. If you were on this Zoom meeting tonight in your den and you didn't want your spouse to be listening, who was watching TV in the living room, they would want to close the door.
Okay.
Mr. Minnow, is it true, just following over the question if I may, because I think it is a point that folks have. Is it true that these areas are being used more and more as home offices? And really, to create sort of a live-work environment for people to be able to work out of their homes?
Yes, and that's become even more important. Hopefully, as we move out of a COVID environment, people are gonna be working again in their offices, but I think we all know that we've learned to work at home, and I think that's gonna be a trend, or at least part of the work week for people will be at home.
Okay, next question. I am noticing especially, or reminded, you know, with the picture that you showed of the two, of the decks, that the deck, one of the decks with the fire pit and the barbecue looks like it, it really borders right on the arboretum. And I know you said something about a five-foot, five-feet of combustible construction. I have no idea what that means more sort of to the layperson. How are you gonna protect the arboretum, which is maybe in some places, a foot away from, from the building, from these barbecue pits, the barbecues and the fire pits? Because on a windy day, there can be sparks, and the arboretum's right there, and I'm really, really concerned about it being vulnerable.
The grills have covers on them, the cooking grills, and the fire pits are designed with low flames, they're gas flames, and they also have a glass, about an eight-to-10-inch glass covering adjacent to the fire pit.
So, you feel confident that with a grill on the barbecue, there aren't, there isn't a possibility that sparks could fly and, you know, get into the foliage of the arboretum?
I can't say with all certainty, but with all, you know, again, we're gonna have the grills centered away from the building and away from the edge of the deck. And, you know, the fire pit's the same way. And it'll be away from any of the adjacent walls of the building.
Okay, I mean, because definitely on a windy day, that's, that's gonna be a concern. Last question, I had asked you last time about the safety of the kids walking along Chatham Road in terms of the garage exit, and I hear that you're bringing sound in as well as light. But I think my question stands, which is, has that been tested in a school zone? And whether you are able to ascertain the effectiveness of sound and light for children who are walking to and from school?
I'm not an expert in either of those subjects, and these systems are used all over for garage doors. They're used in urban areas with much higher traffic volumes that include both children and adults and handicapped people. And they're used quite adequately, but I'm not an expert to testify in that.
Mr. Anglisi, now, is there somebody who might be able to speak to that? Who you might be able to consult with, who could give us a little more reassurance about that, because it's a lot of kids? And it's, you know, it's a concern.
Well, I know that we, I think we've provided those safety features, I think, in response to questions from the board. You know, I think there, and I don't mean to speak for the board, but my, my sense was that that was something that the board looked favorably upon and wanted it. And I can confer with my client, but our sense, I think, might be to defer to the board's desires in that regard.
I think I was asking more specifically if there's a way to just get somebody to come in and say, "We've tried these in school zones, and they are effective, and there haven't been, you know, accidents with pedestrians and children."
I'll confer with my client about that.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Deborah, those are all your questions, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, I see that Dave Cosgrove still has his hand raised. I guess there's some additional questions that are, as of yet, unanswered. Bring him back. Welcome back, Mr. Cosgrove. As before, let's try to address questions that you have for Mr. Minnow, and we will do our best to get them answered in a timely manner.
Thank you, everyone can hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, let's talk about the Summit Medical Group space. How many exam rooms are gonna be in that space?
I don't know. The space is comparable size to what they have now, it's 10,000 square feet.
My question, though, sir, was, how many exam rooms are going to be in that space?
My answer was, I don't know.
Okay, have you drawn any plans yet for that space?
No, no.
How many doctors are gonna work there?
Mr. Minnow, you don't represent Summit Medical, do you?
No.
Okay, thank you.
How many exam, how many doctors are gonna be working there? If you know?
Objection, Mr. Minnow has just testified that he doesn't represent Summit Medical, so he's not able to answer questions regarding the Summit Medical space. Moreover, he did not provide any testimony, and so, I think Mr. Cosgrove's questions are inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. So, hearing that, Dave, if there are questions, obviously architectural, I understand you're asking about the layout of the space. I heard Mr. Minnow testify that it's a similar square footage to today and likely proposed operations, but I think that they don't have somebody to speak to the interior of that space.
Is that his answer? I mean, was it very, I don't like, I don't want to argue with you. You know, it was a simple question, does he know how many doctors are gonna work there? And I think it's a yes or no, I don't think it needs an objection.
I think the, I think the answer was no, and I think the idea is, Mr. Cosgrove, that any other questions that you may have regarding the operation of the Summit Medical Group, let's not waste a lot of time tonight because Mr. Minnow does not represent the Summit Medical Group, and he's testified he has no knowledge of what they're gonna do there. They're gonna furnish, if I understand this correctly, and again, Mr. Minnow, correct me if I'm wrong, 10,000 square feet of space, the fit-up of that space will either be, will be by Summit Medical Group, it may be done by, by the applicant or by the applicant's contractors, but the, the fit-up is not something that Mr. Minnow has worked on. Is that correct, Mr. Minnow?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Cosgrove, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you for answering that question, I appreciate it. Those are the questions. Yeah, yeah, I will, I will tell you, those are the questions I have. There are other questions, in fairness, there's other questions I have, but it's pretty clear to me that, you know, it's not, the questions are not gonna be answered, so I'm not gonna waste more time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see Tom Hildner has his hand raised. Welcome, Tom, you should be able to come off. Great, if you could just state your name and address, we can hear you.
It's Tom Hildner, 10 Exit Road in Short Hills. I have just a couple of questions that arose as a result of the questions and answers, you know, that Ms. Pasternak asked, and the answers that were given to those. It's my understanding from the testimony that on this rooftop decks, there will be no outdoor sound system. But is there anything that will prevent a user of that space using a portable sound system? In other words, not built into the building, but something that can be carried up there and indeed make a great deal of noise, if that's desired?
Mr. Hildner, the testimony was that, that the applicant will comply with the noise ordinance.
Well, the applicant is the LLC, am I correct?
Well, the applicant, and by extension, the tenants, I mean, the applicant would be, you know, any noise that would emanate from the building, there would be an obligation to comply with the township's noise ordinance. That, that's the testimony, and that is the representation that is being made by the applicant.
Well, that means that, if I understand your answer, that means that the user of the space has to be aware of the sound ordinance, has to, and you're calling upon that person to make a judgment as to what might be too loud, and that there's no one in the building, I mean, by way of management, who will be monitoring what goes on on the top of that roof, for example, during a party, right?
I think, I think, sir, that the noise ordinance applies equally to our building as it does to everyone else in town. And, and we have the same obligation, the building, the tenants, as anyone else in town, to comply with the noise ordinance. And so, we are making the representation that will comply with the noise ordinance. And candidly, I think it would be, I'll use the word unfair, inappropriate, to attempt to place a larger burden on us. And I would indicate as well, legally, my opinion, Mr. Buzak will certainly have his, and I think it'll be the same, but I don't know, is that the state regulations with regards to noise preempt local control, and that is what, that is what governs. Although it is fairly commonplace for a municipality to enact ordinances that simply, you know, provide for what the state regulations provide for. And those are designed to apply to everyone equally. And so, we would agree to that.
Well, I mean, as a matter of principle, everyone is supposed to abide by the law, but we know in any number of instances that they don't. My concern is this, that somebody has a party up there, they have a portable sound system, which is not prohibited, that it is, makes a great deal of noise, that the only reliance has to be that somebody in the building or somebody in a neighboring building has to call with regard to a violation. The zoning ordinance officer is not cruising the neighborhood. And am I also correct that there would be nobody from the building who would be monitoring that? And so, this could go on time after time, and you'd have to rely on somebody calling the zoning ordinance. Did I understand that correctly? Zoning officer, not ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, I think what, what it is to understand is that the law would apply equally. And frankly, if someone in the neighborhood was having a party and making loud music, then the residents of our building would be on the other end of that. So, that's a, candidly, that's an issue that, that cuts both ways. And so, we will, we will comply with the law like everybody else.
Yeah, but you have a building of multiple people, but let's move on. Now, this, as I recall from the testimony at the last hearing, this bill, the rooftop, rooftops, there are two of them, are supposed to shut down at 10 o'clock, is that correct?
We've, we've agreed to that as a, as a condition.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
So, and what's gonna happen at 10 o'clock to ensure that whatever party or loud gathering that may be going on on either deck is in fact going to shut down?
I think there was extensive testimony on that, I know Mr. Buzak took-
I don't recall any, maybe you could refresh me.
Well, there, there was, and I know Mr. Buzak took up his notes on it. Mr. Minnow, if you care to repeat that, that would be fine. If I recall, there would be a shutting down of, of the fire pits, doors, you wouldn't be able to get into the, up onto the rooftop deck from the doors, etc. Mr. Minnow, maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that that was, that was the testimony, and, and I think we're, we're getting into enforcement and, and operation, and that is really beyond the purview of the planning board. The, the planning board doesn't work on how this building operates and how things are enforced. We can impose conditions, and in some cases, they're going to be enforced through the municipality. In other cases, they're going to be enforced through the owner of the building, in this case, because it's a multifamily building. But, but the planning board does not get involved in the operation of this facility no differently than it gets involved in the operation of a clubhouse in a homeowner, a single-family development, where there's a homeowners' association running a clubhouse. So-
Well, all right, I understand what you said. I understand what you said, but I don't know that this is, that I'm asking a question of operation. So, let's see if I understand the answer I'm being given. So, we have at 10 o'clock, the people are up on the deck, okay? Now, the, it is supposed to shut at 10 o'clock. That's apparently gonna be one of the conditions for this deck. There is no way that it shuts down, other than people voluntarily leaving. Am I correct on that? There's nobody gonna tell them to leave, there's no automatic sweeping machine that takes people off the deck. There's no way to, no way that happens. If they leave, they leave, if they don't, they don't.
Well, I think there's, there are way, there are ways in which that can be done. If there's any lighting up there, the lighting can be turned off. The gas grills can be turned off at certain, at, at that hour. The doors, access to that certainly is going to be prohibited, as I understood the testimony after that.
That doesn't help if you're already up there. If that helps, if you want to gain access after 10 o'clock, if the door is locked, somebody opens the door for you. But is, is it my understanding, then, from what you're saying, Mr. Buzak, that it is of no concern if the building itself has no meaningful way to shut down parties? That's not a concern in whether or not you should move a building with rooftop decks? And whether that's character, let me just finish my sentence.
Yes, I'm sorry.
With the character of the neighborhood. So, the fact that there's nobody gonna ask the people to leave, there's no way of enforcing that, that doesn't matter, as long as they say, "Well, we'll put up a sign, please leave at 10 o'clock", and that's all that's recorded. Is that people?
If, if that is a condition of the resolution of approval, that can ultimately be enforced by the township. Will there be situations, potentially, where someone does not abide by those requirements? I suspect that that can happen. And in that case, the owner of that building will be subject to the condition, and will be subject to the ramifications of violating that condition.
Well, in a, in a real world, let me ask one thing. Is there any, this is what I had clear in the very first question I asked. Is there any, will there be any restriction on bringing up portable sound systems or sound generators, whatever might be the right term, up on that deck? Is that gonna be part of the requirements? In other words, people who use the deck cannot bring up their own sound system?
No, that's not, what the, what the applicant has agreed to is that it will abide by the town noise ordinance.
All right, sir. So, until, until somebody determines that the ordinance is actually being violated, and until somebody actually makes a complaint, until in fact there is a response, the sound is free to be whatever it will be. And that's what the applicant's position is.
Just as it is for you to have a portable sound system in your backyard or on your property, Mr. Hildner.
I don't have a 62-unit building.
Mr. Hildner, I'm, Mr. Anglisi, if I might, Mr. Hildner, I'm going to also mention this to you. There will be a public comment period after this application, if all the witnesses are completed and the questions are asked. And the board is certainly amenable for you or any other member of the public to make any recommendations that you may have. You know, we don't pretend, well, let me speak for myself. I don't pretend to have all the answers to all of the issues and all of the potential situations, but I, I have faith in, in applicants, and I have faith in the public. If there's something that you or other members of the public believe that can assist in assuring that these kinds of conditions that the applicant has agreed to and that we've worked on and that have been generated in, in, in some part by the public, I think the board, and again, in this case, I will speak for the board because I've represented them for long enough to feel confident that I can do this, they're certainly going to- Uh, they're certainly going to listen to those recommendations. So I would, I would ask all members of the public, and I'm not just directing this at you, Mr. Hildner, but any other member who has a concern, uh, if they have a solution or a potential solution for that concern, for enforcement or otherwise, please, at the time when public comments are made, don't be shy. Make that recommendation and I'm sure the board will consider it, uh, to, to get a better project if in fact this project's going to be approved. Uh, thank you, sir. Ms. Zoll, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, thank you. I appreciate the characterization and it's a good reminder to everybody listening that we will have the, the public testimony point after we have asked questions of all the witnesses. Thank you.
All right, I, I hope to take advantage, uh, advantage of that, uh, that invitation. One last question. Um, will the people who want to use the rooftop decks for an affair have to, uh, in any way, uh, get, uh, the approval or permission, whatever the right word may be, uh, of the building management? Or am I free, as a resident, am I free to conduct an affair up there? Uh, you know, without regard to registering or, uh, otherwise letting anyone know what I'm doing?
Uh, the answer is yes, that if you wanted to hold, uh, if a resident wanted to hold some sort of event up there, as you put it, um, then that, that would be a separate, um, you'd have to, they have to go through building management, yes.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hildner. Okay, uh, I see a question from, it looks like, okay, I just see Jean and Deborah have their hands raised, so Jean.
I brought, um, I'm sorry, I'm sending Schofield to have her hand up and since.
Got it. I, you, you, you did it before I could see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just some quick questions.
Would you mind just stating your name and address for the record?
Eileen Schofield, 99 Oak View Terrace, Short Hills.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Mr. Minnow, you said the roof deck was added to the plans only in September. Um, and it was, and on previous, previous time, it was told, I was told that it was not part of the settlement agreement. In other words, there was no deck in the settlement agreement. So is it now up to this planning board to approve or disapprove this new deck?
I, I objected to the question, it's not, not one that is within Mr. Minnow's purview.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, are you aware that the Oak View Terrace neighbors hear noise from the boxcar restaurant at the train station? Mr. Minnow?
No.
Are you aware that the police have been called for numerous noise complaints?
Again, I respectfully, I, I don't see what, what.
Well, I mean, he's an architect and, um, he put a party deck up somewhere where travel is going to, to travel, for sound is going to travel. So I just, as an architect.
Hey, Mr. Boozak, Madam Chair, we, the applicant has stipulated very clearly and several times that it will abide by the noise ordinance, I.
Okay. Um, nothing to do with noise. Uh, you have said that the party deck is right next contiguous to the, uh, arboretum. Um, have you taken into consideration the nocturnal animals in the arboration, arboretum as an architect while you were planning to put it there?
Uh, again, I, I don't think that that's inappropriate.
Well, it's the community, he's the architect, he picked where to put the party deck.
I, I think it's, I think it's a valid, I, I think it's a valid question. And Mr. Minnow can answer it. If he did, he did. If he didn't, he didn't. We can move on, Mr. Minnow.
I did not.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Schofield.
All right, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schofield. Okay, um, we can bring, uh, Jean back, Eileen, that's fine. Jean Pasternak.
Well, okay, I, you know, we've, we've been at this for two hours of questions of Mr. Minnow, I don't know how much longer this is going on, going on. I, I noticed that there are repeat questioners who have had all the opportunity, they've wanted to ask questions. We would like to put Mr. Dean up, uh, and I was just wondering when, when we might get an opportunity to do that, unless, uh, everybody who wanted to ask questions has had the opportunity to do so. I certainly agree that everybody who wants the opportunity to ask questions should have the opportunity to do so. But when people start coming back up multiple times, uh, you know, from our perspective, it, it really starts to feel like, you know, this is just going on and on and on, uh, that we're repeating questions and so forth. And, and I, I think it's, it's, uh, especially on the fifth meeting, um, you know, starting to, to be, uh, create a hardship here for the applicant, so I just.
Sure, I hear you and I understand, but similarly, you know, that we've made the public sit and wait through all five meetings until we've given them the opportunity to speak. So I, I just feel that it's our responsibility as the board to hear the questions of our, you know, public. So I, I hear you and, um, yep, so that said, Jean, you are back, you, we're giving you a second.
Thanks very much. Um, I, I was, uh, Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart. I did have additional questions and I respect that we were trying to get through. I give everybody a bit of time and that we had the chance to come back. So thank you, Beth, for being supportive of the people that you represent. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to ask something that I haven't heard asked before. Uh, if Summit Medical Group were not to renew a lease or we're, we're no longer to be a tenant in the building, um, what other permissible uses of that space are envisioned? Uh, what, sir, um, would you, would you say, uh, that space could be used for?
Uh, again, I, that's not a question for the applicant, uh, for the architect, I should say. And candidly, I, I think that the, the, the plan, the, the ordinance is the ordinance.
Can I just ask though, to the architect, has that, is that space being designed in such a way that it would really only, um, work for Summit Medical Group? Or could it be used for other tenants?
Again.
It's laid out and the way it would be built.
Let me, let me answer the question, if you would, Mr. Inglisino and, and Mr. Minnow. The ordinance, um, of this Pasternak has principal permitted uses and there are two. First one is residential apartments with optional associated amenities and services, including but not limited to fitness centers, screening room, business center, balconies and terraces for individual units and other uses customarily associated with multifamily dwellings, provided that such accessory uses are subordinate to the principal use and serve only the principal use. The second permitted principal use are medical offices as expressly provided, but not including 24-hour urgent care or emergency care services. So without a use variance, the non-residential space here is, uh, limited to medical offices with, with the limitation of not including the 24-hour urgent care or emergency care service facility and any of the other requirements that are set forth in the further details of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I wondered, um, since the last hearing, I, there was quite a bit of discussion about the drop-off pickup area on, on Woodland Road. Uh, and given the narrowness of the space, uh, at that corner, um, has there been further thought or, um, ideas, um, Mr. Minnow, regarding, uh, during school opening and ending, plus the extended school day ending times? Um, how this could be improved upon, given the concerns that were expressed? With, uh, the post-COVID era, um, just last night at the, uh, the, the township committee meeting, there was comment and further, um, problem solving regarding double parking uh, going on in downtown Melbourne because of delivery services like Uber Eats and so forth. Um, given this space, you know, has to be safely shared between children, parents, tenants, patients, you know, Uber, Amazon, all these other potential delivery service during this post-COVID era. You know, statistics are showing that there's exponential growth in the use of these delivery services.
Uh, to me. Dean, I don't, I, I don't want to cut you off, but we are, our next, um, witness is the, the traffic person. So I don't know if Mr. Inglisino.
But there's no, there's been no further, um, thought or anything about either, uh, maybe not necessarily like relocating where that would be obviously at this stage, but how, how can that be improved upon? Has there been any further thought since the last time we, we, we heard testimony?
I, I don't believe that Mr. Minnow testified in regards to that as the architect.
So we will be hearing testimony on, on that exact topic, I think, next.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there was testimony by Mr. Juan Zafama with regard to that, uh, issue. A lot of testimony and a lot of questions.
Well, I meant as the team of people working together on the development, including Mr. Minnow. Has there been further discussion with the team as to how to tackle that problem from his perspective as the architect?
Again, that, that's not a, not an issue that Mr. Minnow has testified to. And I believe Mr. Minnow asked you that that's not your area of expertise, is it not?
Are you answering for him, sir?
I asked him a question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's not my area of expertise. And you will hear from a traffic engineer.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, we've heard from Mr. Juan Zafama in the, in the drop-off areas.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, Deborah, what, uh, yep, if we can make this, uh, hopefully the, the final set of questions for this.
Hi, um, Deborah Neva, 65, Noel Road. I, I, I'm, I'm confused now, so I don't know, maybe Mr. Boozak can clarify something for me. We've been asking about the deck as though it's a done deal. And now it's sounding like maybe the planning board has a say about whether or not the decks happen. I'm just confused. Can you clarify that?
I don't know how I can clarify beyond what I, what I've already said. The principal permitted uses are residential apartments with optional associated amenities and services, including but not limited to the fitness center, screening rooms, business centers, balcony, terraces for individual units and other uses customarily associated with multifamily dwellings, provided the accessory uses are subordinate to the principal uses and serve only the principal use. Uh, so those are the, the principal uses. We haven't heard as yet from the applicant's planner. Uh, but I suspect that the applicant's planner will be addressing your question more directly. Uh, and, and, uh, I'll lea- I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so it hasn't been asked and answered, is that what you're saying?
I think it will be, I, I think it has not been asked and answered by the applicant's witnesses.
Okay, so the, so the deck remains an open question?
No, I didn't say that. What I said is that it hasn't been addressed by the applicant and we're going to have to hear what the applicant and his expert has to say about, about issues such as that. That's what the planner's testimony will be on, among other things, including the, uh, the variances that they are, or the variance that they're seeking or variances, maybe two.
Okay, and then the members of the planning board take that into consideration in terms of making their decision about the decks?
The planning board takes that testimony into consideration, uh, with regard to the entirety of the application. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, not any specific aspect of it, but the entirety of the application.
So just for my edification, so they can't yes and no particular details? They have to accept the whole thing? Or they can yes and no particular details?
Uh, this application has been presented as, as a whole, as I understand it. So it's a, it's a composite application that's being submitted.
Cool, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I see we have more members of the public with questions, which.
If I might, Ms. Zoll, Ms. Inglisino, do you know how long Mr. Dean's uh, testimony is anticipated to be, his direct testimony?
Uh, I would say half hour or less, Mr. Boozak.
Okay, uh, all I'm suggesting, Chair Azol, is that, uh, we, uh, since Mr. Dean is here and has been here, and he may have been here last month, I'm not sure. But, uh, I, I would like to make sure that, that we get Mr. Dean's testimony. And I would ask Mr. Inglisino that, uh, if, if in fact we don't complete the questions of Mr. Minnow, uh, and we get Mr. Dean's testimony and, uh, that Mr. Minnow return if we haven't completed his questions. Uh, or at, at Mr. Inglisino's, uh, discretion, if, if he doesn't want to do that, that's fine. I just hate to have, uh, the witness already and I know what it is to prepare witnesses, uh, and then have that postponed for another week or two or three before we get to the application again. So I don't know, Mr. Inglisino, if you want to comment on that or you want to talk to Mr. Dean or your client?
I, I'd like to speak with my client about that, Mr. Boozak.
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we go on with the questions, if you're able to speak with them?
I mean, we would like, we would like to have Mr. Dean, uh, get his testimony in tonight. Uh, and remember, you know, Mr. Minnow didn't provide any affirmative testimony tonight. This was all about answering questions. Uh, he answered questions for a long period of time at the last meeting. Uh, we've been here now a little over two hours, uh, just answering questions.
Understood, love. Why don't we go on, Chair, and let's see if we can move this along.
Okay, um, so BB will bring you in and understanding hopefully the context, we can ask your questions. New questions only, hopefully. Welcome back. You're muted, BB.
So are we, Mr., I'm sorry.
Just one quick question.
Thank you.
I, I, I guess, Mr. Boozak, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Uh, when, when are we going to have? We would like Mr. Dean to testify, uh, particularly now we're having multiple members of the public come back multiple times for additional questions. And I, I think, you know, candidly, that, that from our perspective becomes, uh, prejudicial to the applicant. Uh, I know that's not the intent of the board or the chair, but, you know, we've had Mr. Dean here all night. He's here to testify and, um, we'd like him to be able to testify, uh, and that, that is our, our request.
Okay, well, let's see, let's see if we can get to him. Ms. Sheer said she had.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, so why don't you ask your question, Ms. Sheer?
Just one question, it's actually to you, Mr. Boozak, following up what you've just said to, uh, Ms. Nevis. And the question is, when was this application filed? Where, i- is there, is this application that we're talking about accepting completely or not accepting? If it's somewhere, when was it filed?
So BB, because, because this question is not a question for the architect. I know you're, it's, it's pertinent to what Mr. Boozak just said. We would like to get to the professional who's here tonight. So we will hold that question and it can be answered before.
He, he can't just answer it quickly, it's a long question?
I, I think actually Ms. David probably is the one who has to answer the question.
And it would be in the documents.
Applications in.
They'll be in the documents online, which are provided.
Well, how is it identified?
The application for development.
Uh, the application for development, uh, was deemed complete. Uh, it looks like July 13, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
I think, but I, I, I will defer to Ms. David because she.
What's in it?
Our.
Application was received in this off by May on June 17th. It was deemed complete on, uh, July 13th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to conclude this testimony. I would like to move to Mr. Dean, if Mr. Inglisino is ready to do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dean, welcome.
Evening, everyone.
I think it's time for you to get sworn.
Certainly.
Mr. Fishman, we haven't called on you all night, so.
I know.
Here's your opportunity.
My, my one shining moment tonight.
There it is.
Uh, do you swear from the testimony about to give tonight's hearings be the truth, the whole truth, and the truth? Yes, I do. If you would just state your name, spelling your name for the record, please. Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dean, can you please provide the board, uh, with your professional background, educational background, and include any licenses that you hold?
Certainly, I'm a graduate of Lehigh University with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. I'm a former member of the faculty of Lehigh University and Lafayette College, having served as an adjunct professor teaching transportation engineering. I've been a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, uh, since 1987. I've been qualified before roughly 400 different planning and zoning boards throughout the state, as well as Superior Court as an expert in traffic engineering. Uh, uh, I serve as a principal, uh, to Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville. Um, and I have, uh, previously appeared before this, this board, um, as well as many others throughout the state in Essex County and served as the municipal traffic consultant for Essex Fells, uh, in Essex County within the past two years.
I respectfully submit Mr. Dean as an expert in traffic engineering.
We'll hear you as, and your New Jersey license is current, correct?
Yes, it is, and in good standing, yes.
Thank you. Yes, we will hear you as a traffic engineer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Can you please describe the traffic aspects of this application?
I'd gladly do so. Just by way of, of reference, I submitted correspondence to the board dated October 15, 2020, that sets forth some traffic conclusions related to the proposed development. I will say, in, in my career, this particular application is somewhat unique in that the township itself retained a traffic engineering consultant in 2019 as part of the settlement agreement with the community. And that firm conducted the, the regular contents of a traffic engineering study, which I appended to that October 2020 correspondence. Just by way of background, traffic engineering studies rely on an evaluation of traffic conditions, principally during peak traffic hours, which for a residential use and, and employment type use, are concentrated during weekday morning and afternoon rush hours. Traffic counts were conducted by the township's consultant during those peak hours. They were conducted pre-COVID, so they, in my opinion, certainly represent typical conditions that we might expect, unlike today. As part of our own evaluation, we independently collected traffic counts in late May of 2020 and contrasted that data with the information that was included in the township's study. And obviously, as we expected, traffic conditions were much lower. So I, I felt it would be inappropriate to rely on that data. But I do understand the patterns and the volumes that were included in the township's traffic study. That work also included, principally for the public's benefit and those members of the board that may not be familiar with that work, that work also considered traffic crashes that occurred at Woodland and Chatham over a three-year condition, which is typical in a traffic engineering study. And by and large, found an occurrence of an accident one per year. I am aware of the fatality that occurred in January of 2019, that without question is an isolated incident, and, and certainly, as was concluded in the Township Zone Traffic Study, was not something that could be characterized as endemic or particularly unique to the intersection itself. As, as tragic as it was, it was during evening conditions. And although the intersection is lit with overhead street lamps, the only thing I could surmise is that either the individual had some reasons to leave the scene of the accident, or that the lighting could have been out of commission or not maintained. The traffic study set forth a projection of conditions, and traffic engineers described those conditions akin to a report card on a range from A, being the best level of service, as that descriptive term is known, which means short delays, five seconds or less, to a condition of level of service F, which means as drivers, we wait a considerable time in excess of 50 seconds to turn from the intersection. Because both streets, and, and I would concur with these findings, are characterized as low-volume streets. We have exceptional levels of service during peak hours at levels of service A and B. And I would concur with those findings. The one thing that was included in the traffic study, and I'll get to the projections in a moment, that wasn't, should I say, included in the study, was to take into consideration the uses on the site that are being and have been demolished, that no longer have the ability to generate traffic. And specifically, there were three buildings on the site, an automobile service station that at one time obviously had gasoline pumps and provided repairs. There is a two-story dentist medical office building on Chatham to the western end of the property, and then a smaller office building on Woodland, all of which will no longer be a part of the, the overall property and have been demolished. Each of those components certainly generated traffic at one time or another. And the comparison in, in my review of this application, if we contrast what is proposed with 62 residential apartments, and I'm considering the Summit Medical Group to be net neutral. In other words, it's 10,000 square feet today, and it generates a certain amount of traffic, and it will be 10,000 square feet tomorrow or the next day if, if the project is so approved, and it would generate the same amount of traffic. So in, in terms of comparison, it is a traffic comparison of 62 residential multifamily dwelling units with a medical office, a professional office, and a gasoline service station. And unless someone's concerned about the numbers, in, in applying the standard indices that traffic engineers use to forecast traffic, when I look at the trip generation, that's the term, characteristics of each of those uses in the morning, those existing uses would have generated almost 90 trips. The gasoline station has some in and out traffic. The medical office and office would have employees arriving. By contrast, the proposed development for 62 apartments would generate only 30, 30 trips in that same morning peak hour. So roughly a third as much traffic generated from this property than historically existed. In the evening peak hour, the former site uses still busy, a little less traffic, about 80 traffic movements in the peak hour, and the projection for the residential apartments is a little higher, almost 40. So it's half as much traffic in the evening. But on balance, the proposed redevelopment of the property yields less traffic than historically has been generated and occurred within the neighborhood. In reviewing the traffic study, what was done is what we call a build condition. And sort of we have the before conditions that give us a baseline for evaluation. And then we look at the after, or the build conditions, that assumes the project would be built. Nowhere in any of the studies was a credit, in other words, a discount for traffic applied, simply because obviously the service station was closed. But it was recognized that the other buildings certainly weren't generating to their potential. But even without taking any credit for the existing uses, the traffic study concluded that there would be essentially no change in levels of service, that there would still be very favorable levels of service A and B during both of the peak hours, which underscores the absence of any material traffic impact associated with the redevelopment. In, in terms of the site environs, one of the things I observed is the number of driveways along both Chatham and along Woodland. On Chatham Road, there are three driveways. There is a driveway for the medical office building to the far west, and there were two driveways associated with the service station. On Woodland, there were also three driveways. There was a single driveway serving the service station, a small driveway between the office building and Summit Medical Group, that was an exit driveway, and then the primary site driveway further to the south on Woodland. So in, in terms of safety, each driveway represents a potential point of conflict between ingress and egress to a site and street traffic. And on Woodland, driveways are being eliminated, leaving only one, so that has a positive aspect. And on Chatham Road, we're going from three driveways to two driveways that, as you've heard described, will be access controlled. So in terms of safety improvements and benefit, once again, the closure of multiple driveways certainly lessens potential conflict for not only motorists, but it makes it a more pedestrian-friendly environment, simply because a pedestrian walking along Chatham Road, for example, has far fewer driveways to negotiate. I've reviewed Mr. Lonza Fama's plans. I've reviewed an amendment that was presented to the board that includes a drop-off area along Woodland Avenue. And, and I find that that is a, a, a very common design technique that is used in an effort and recognition of the emergence of things like ride sharing and, and obviously parcel deliveries, whether it's Amazon or UPS and FedEx and the like. And that cutout, if you will, on Woodland Avenue certainly provides a safe, a safe place off of the traveled way to allow that activity to occur. And I, and I certainly agree with Mr. Lonzen Fama's approach to it, that, that it is something that is a benefit to the building and obviously to keeping traffic moving in the immediate area. So in conclusion, we, we've certainly reviewed the data that's been available from the, from the township. I've independently reviewed those projections and, and concur with those findings. And I think the most notable, I'll say, conclusion that, that was reached in the Township Zone Traffic Study is that the proposal for the redevelopment will have no significant impact on overall traffic conditions. And, and certainly for that reason, and given that that study was done in 2019, we, we certainly didn't need to verify much more than that, given that it was a very, obviously, positive conclusion. And, and it certainly was of consideration when the governing body adopted the settlement agreement. So with that, I don't think, and Mr. Inglisino, I don't know if there was anything else I needed to cover, but that, that really is the essence of my testimony, in that it's been studied and now re-studied by two traffic consultants who reached the same conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. And the town's traffic study was dated August of 19, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the settlement agreement, of course, was dated September 17, 2009.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I have no further questions of Mr. Dean, and certainly yield the floor back to you for questions from the board, the board professionals, and the public.
Thank you very much. Okay, questions from board members for Mr. Dean? Questions on his testimony? Sanjeev?
Thank you. Mr. Dean, you've talked about everything as far as before and after goes. And I read your, your traffic study as well. And in there, there was not a mention of delivery services, which you already covered now. I would ask another question before and after. Today, if the delivery, not the delivery, move-in and move-out, the cut that has been made, that, if I correctly remember, that was enough for a truck to be there. Now, in our houses itself, the delivery is more like three to four times a day. Where there's a 62 apartments, if the truck is parked there for move-in and move-out, they've been using the public road for move-in and move-out as well. Along with that, you think the delivery cars will be able to fit in that cutout?
I, I'm not sure I understand the question. It seems like there were, there were two components of that question. The first is what I'll consider the day-in-and-day-out parcel delivery-type drop-off service, correct?
Yes, you mentioned that, but we missed the move-in and move-out on top of the delivery.
Correct.
Because they are not going to be separate. They could be, but it could also be concurrent at the same time. Now, when the truck is parked in that cutout, the delivery, would there be another car that, that is going to be parked right behind in that cutout? Because I, it was my understanding, I'm sorry, you were saying something?
No, I'd, I'd like you to finish, and then I can hopefully cover it all.
Sure, sure. In my understanding, it wasn't enough for two trucks or for two cars or a truck and a car to be parked in that cutout?
That, that is correct. And what I was going to explain is that, that cutout is, I, I think, about 40 feet. The, the standard, I'll say, the biggest U-Haul truck is, is a 26-foot truck. So assuming he needs a little room to maneuver forward and drop some ramps, that, that would accommodate the, the single moving truck. Alternatively, UPS trucks, FedEx, or sometimes vans, they're much shorter. And it's conceivable that both of those vehicles, should they happen to arrive at the same time, could do so in the same curb cut. My, my expectation is, is that building management will, will regulate the move-in and move-out, and, and they will be scheduled at very specific times, generally to avoid weekends, but, but not necessarily. And, and I may want to defer that question to the applicant as we return before you. But one of the things I know, just from my own office, I, I can almost set my watch to when the, the FedEx delivery shows up on a regular basis or UPS. And so once those patterns are established, it's, it's very easy to coordinate the move-in, move-out with that particular tenant to ensure that it's not conflicting with that activity.
And, and we have heard about FedEx and UPS, that's, that's fine. But there is a new giant in town, which is Amazon.
Correct.
That delivery comes in every time. You're talking it based on your experience? I'm talking it based on my experience, where I've always seen building having the move-in and move-out within their own premises, whether that's a lane that they have created within their own premise or within the garage, wherever that is. There's a service elevator. We are doing both garbage pickup, move-in, move-out, delivery services from FedEx, from UPS, from USPS, and Amazon from that same little cutout. And that's where my, my concern was. So if you feel that is, that is okay, I, I want to feel comfortable that way.
I, I, I understand. I think for my understanding, again, not having done a, a fair number of multifamily buildings, is that the average turnover in units is about 15% annually. And just doing that math means that there would be nine move-in or move-outs on an annual basis for this building, which is less than one a month. So we, we start to look at probabilities of, and frequency of when we would expect the moving vehicles to be there, which is certainly not on a daily basis. Obviously, the parcel deliveries would be. I think from a practical perspective, if, if there were a moving van in that space, and it, and it happened to be at that exact same moment when FedEx or Amazon delivers, they'll go around the block, deliver their other parcels within the neighborhood, and return to the site. Alternatively, and I'll have to defer to Mr. Lonza Fama as to whether that loading area, if you will, that cutout could be lengthened. I, I think it does start to, i- if this were a bigger building, I think that probability increases enough. But I think, given the small scale overall, that, that might be creating a lot of unnecessary pavement and curb opening on, on a public street.
So when you say 15%, and you came down to nine move-in, and, and I wouldn't challenge that. But the thing is, when you say nine move-out, there are nine move-in as well. So it is not one a month. It is definitely more than that. So even if you take just nine, it's 18 trucks that are coming in to move out the furniture and coming back in to bring the furniture in from the new tenant. So 18 is one and a half a month. Again, I believe it's more number, but you are a professional, you may know better. So I, I have still, again, that, that concern. And we have spoken about this in the past. Any other thought process on this at all, Mr. Inglisino? Any applicants, any thought process there that they may want to do it internally or have a dedicated place inside or on premises?
The, the, the only alternative I could consider, and it wasn't to cut off Mr. Inglisino, is that those, those move-ins and move-outs could alternatively be scheduled on the weekends or, I'll say, after 5:00 PM to avoid the conflict with the parcel delivery activity.
And, and I think, Mr. Vinnyak, with a name like Inglisino, Mr. Vinnyak, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, but certainly my name is mispronounced quite a bit. So you, you raise an interesting point, and obviously, the applicant's interests align here with, with yours. And so I think the applicant agreed that the move-in and move-out would, would occur on the weekends, and during the weekdays after 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, and thank you, Mr. Inglisino.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dean, I have a question.
Certainly.
You talked about the fact that some of the, there were existing driveways that were going to be eliminated. Is that correct?
Yes.
On both. On both streets?
Correct.
But they're going to be replaced by entrances into the parking garage that are, have to crawl, where you have to cross a sidewalk into a building. If you're going in or coming out, you have to cross the sidewalk with very limited ability to see where you're going or see traffic coming down the street or pedestrians, isn't that so?
Correct.
So it's not really a question of just eliminating driveways and saying, well, X number will be eliminated and replaced by Y number. We're talking about new driveways that will be, like I said before, we'll cross an existing sidewalk and into the building and out of the building with very limited sight panoramas. Does that concern you?
It always concerns me and certainly I've done enough work in Hudson County, in Jersey City, in Hoboken and other places where garages, Maristown, where garages are being used for multifamily buildings. And the typical streetscape has been to push the building to the property line or close to it and have an opening onto the sidewalk. Having an opening onto the sidewalk itself is not inherently dangerous. Obviously, the site is served now by six different openings that require travel across a sidewalk. One cannot, even residential driveways cross a sidewalk. I think the more pertinent question and the one of concern undoubtedly is the visibility, not only for pedestrians on the sidewalk, but obviously of the pedestrians on the sidewalk, the vehicles emerging. My experience has been that there are a variety of techniques to address that. There's signage alerting the pedestrians to it being an active driveway. There are audio cues, whether they're buzzers, alarms, beeping, and certainly things that are not obnoxious to the community, but have an emit a sound of suitable volume to the pedestrians immediately at that driveway. And then in combination with visual aids, whether it's striping or a different texture of pavement for the sidewalk itself. So pedestrians are aware of the fact that they're traversing not a regular sidewalk, but an active driveway. And then I'm sure we've all seen, you know, use of parabolic mirrors that are used to basically look around the corner that provide an aid to those drivers and pedestrians. So the expectation is, is that drivers exercise reasonable and prudent behavior. And by the same token, that pedestrians are also aware of their surroundings. But I think with that combination of safeguards, as you've heard from Mr. Minow, that is a commonly used, acceptable and adequate means of traffic control.
I've heard from Mr. Minow and I think from Mr. Lanza Fama that they intend to use light and sound. I haven't heard yet, except from you, the idea of using mirrors. I think that's a great idea.
All are, I'll say, in the toolbox and available for discussion. I also, and I would want to work this out with the building department and someone who's better versed in construction code issues. But I'm sure the board is aware of what is known as a tactile surface that is used by visually impaired pedestrians as they approach. A handicap ramp, for example, they're the red, blue truncated domes, they're called, where it provides a different walking course so that individuals understand that something different is happening at this location. And it gives them, again, a cue to pay a little closer attention. So we're open to all suggestions from the board. I don't think there's any one right answer or wrong answer.
Those are two that you've brought up that we have not heard from, heard about yet in these hearings. And Mr. Inglisino, I'd like to know whether or not you will discuss with your client the use of all four of those warnings, signs and symbols, meaning the light and the, and the sound, which we've already heard you're going to provide. But now we're talking about the texture of the sidewalk being different. Excuse me, for the visually impaired. And we're talking about the parabolic, is that the correct expression?
That's correct.
Glass reflectors. So that the driver is coming out of the building can see kind of around the corner. Are you prepared to talk about with your client about the other two as well?
Yes, Mr. Steinberg. And thank you for those questions and suggestions, excellent points. We will, my client is amenable to those. We will confer with Ms. Callahan to receive her input on how those additional items, the textured sidewalk and the mirrors can be worked into the plans.
Thank you. I have nothing more, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I see Gaston has a question and David Sears as well. Gaston, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to piggyback off of Joe's question there. Is there anything that can alert the driver that a pedestrian is in the walkway rather than just relying on what the pedestrian is seeing?
The only way to do that is to improve visibility of the wall itself. And I've been involved in a project that was a significant redevelopment that had a garage exiting onto a sidewalk apron. And we architecturally created columns and the use of glass to improve those sight triangles, if you will, so that the visibility of pedestrians who happen to be walking in either direction are more visible to those approaching motorists. So that is another technique that we've used to improve pedestrian visibility. But that principally is the reason for the parabolic mirrors, is that the motorist can look up and observe any pedestrians approaching.
Okay, there's no, there are no motion sensors or anything like that that would, similar to one that turns a light on or infrared sensors that could activate something that says, you know, pedestrian ahead?
It's, I've seen it work the other way around, where as there's a detector within the garage, so that as a vehicle emerges and the door rises, obviously, the pedestrian is alerted. That the problem with sensors on the street is, you know, wildlife runs by, leaves blow, you know, and they false trigger all the time. And I suspect that would become far more of a nuisance on the community than what we're trying to achieve with providing a balance of warning to both pedestrian and motorists. So I'm not aware of any of those devices, but they, similar things are used in traffic signals. And candidly, there really isn't a good system that is, I'll say, foolproof. Anything mechanical or electrical.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dean, I just had one question regarding both your analysis and the township's generated STANTEC analysis. Was any consideration given to any sort of traffic management devices such as flashing yellow light at the Woodland and Chatham Road intersection?
We certainly didn't consider it. And the reason those devices are used and for everyone's benefit, there is a federal publication used by the Department of Transportation, counties, local townships, called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And it is the publication that tells us stop signs must be eight-sided and red, yield sign must be, et cetera. Within that publication are guidelines that dictate the installation of warning devices and traffic signals. And those regulations or design standards have certain minimum requirements, both for traffic volume and for crash history. And those types of flashing devices are installed where other remedial measures haven't worked. And by that, I mean a combination of enforcement, better signage and other corrective measures that fall short of needing a signal. And in reviewing the, not only the traffic volumes, the very favorable levels of service and the relative infrequency of crash history, in my opinion, of a flashing device at that location isn't warranted and candidly would serve no purpose. The intersection is conspicuously marked. It has a high visibility crosswalk. The stop sign, you know, is there and certainly as a T-intersection, it's incumbent upon the driver to adhere to the motor vehicle code and yield to through traffic before entering the intersection. So I'm not really sure what that flasher does other than alert the people on Woodland. Basically, you're supposed to stop. And I don't find any lack of, I'll say, visibility or control that warrants that type of signalization.
I understand what you're saying. I was concerned more about Chatham Road, where I think the consistency of speed limit maintenance may sometime fall into question. But I see you did come up with the, you know, the conclusion of lightly traffic intersection. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Dean from our board? Okay, let's move to, let me get to members of the public. Miss Schofield. Can you come back in? Welcome.
Hi, it's Tom Herbertson, 76 Oakview Terrace.
Hi there.
Hey, my, same address, different name.
No problem, sorry about that.
That's okay. Good evening, Mr. Dean.
Good evening.
I'm just going to refer, you prepared a report October 15th regarding your findings, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and so in the very last paragraph, almost the very last sentence, you say that your report, though, is essentially unusable, correct?
No, I don't said that at all. I said, "The traffic counts conducted in the COVID conditions, in my opinion, are not representative of what I would consider to be typical." And once we're through the pandemic and we, I'll say, get back to normal life, people going to work and shopping and going to school, et cetera, that at some point, traffic will increase. What remains unknown is how many employers will continue to permit employees to work from home, which overall lessens traffic. So in my opinion, using the count data in 2020 was not going to provide this board with the same information that would be relevant to consider the merits of the application. So the data that we reviewed was collected by the Township's consultant, and it was done during pre-COVID conditions. So in my opinion, it certainly represents a conservative estimate of traffic.
So you're relying for your data on the STANTEC report, correct?
Correct.
All right. And if you, do you have that report in front of you?
I do.
Okay. If you'll go to page three there, under the data collection section?
Yes.
Are you aware that STANTEC did their counts, their turning movement counts, all their counts on July 24th, 2019?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you agree with me, that's during school vacation, correct?
Correct.
And so those counts wouldn't take into any consideration people going to Glenwood School, which is right down there at the end of Chatham Road?
Correct.
Schools not in.
Correct.
And also, that's prime vacation time, correct?
Well, not for everyone, you know, for certain, those with still school-aged children, that is a popular time to vacation. What we also find is that as college students are home, they are making up the absences within the workforce through part-time employment, summer jobs, things of that ilk. And so that the difference between school months and non-school months is not as dramatic as people might think. And having literally done thousands of traffic studies, it's seldom as dramatic as you might surmise.
Well, but you would, you would agree with me, though, that Glenwood, or maybe you don't know, Glenwood's an elementary school, so none of those kids are going to work, summer jobs, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also, the commuter parking lot up there for the Short Hills train station, that would, if summer vacations, as I know them, holds true, you know, June, July, August, there's a possibility, would you agree with me, that there's less people up there driving to the commuter parking lot?
I don't have a basis to agree with you on that.
Okay, but all right. So speaking of no basis, so your report certainly wouldn't tell me and the STANTEC report wouldn't tell me. So you don't know how many kids are walking along Chatham Road or Woodland Road going on its typical school day?
Correct.
Okay. And you don't know how many parents are walking with their kids to Glenwood School on a typical school day? You can't tell me that.
That's correct, yes.
All right, you can't tell me how many kids are getting driven to Glenwood School back or forth on Chatham or Woodland Road?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Dean, are these traffic studies, are they ever used in personal injury litigation in your, your experience as a traffic expert?
Not directly, no.
Okay. Do you think it would be better to wait and to get a traffic study that has normal conditions when school's in session for 10 months out of the year rather than the two, the two months out of the year that was studied here?
Sure, I mean, it's a fair question. I think it depends on a few circumstances. In this particular instance, the traffic volumes, even if they were doubled on Chatham Road and Woodland, which I've never seen a case, irrespective of the road and how close it is to a school, I've never seen a case where those, that traffic volume doubles between summer and non-summer. Even if that traffic doubled, in my opinion, the levels of service and meaning the ability of a driver to safely and efficiently, conveniently with minimal delay to turn either left on, right onto Chatham would be similar to what's presented in this report. So the findings aren't nullified because there's 10% less traffic on the roads, so to speak, and that the findings would continue to remain valid during school times. And it provided the township with a snapshot of traffic conditions that culminated in the drafting and settlement agreement. And in my opinion, was done following standard professional conduct and practices. Neither applicant nor the township at the time had the luxury of waiting until school was in session to identify that there's a few dozen more cars during those hours. I should also point out that during the evening peak hour, which I believe was from 5:00 to 6:00, school's already been dismissed, 5:30 to 6:30. So school has been out for at least three hours by then. So the impact of school conditions have no effect on the evening peak hour. So that's why I have confidence in the findings. And I can say in my professional opinion that they are appropriate for this particular intersection. If we had an intersection that was right on the bubble of, I'll say, a failing traffic condition, long delays, major accident, crash history, then I would say maybe we should look a little closer. But where, when we are at the highest levels of service and the best operating conditions, I'm very confident that there would be no significant difference during school hours.
Okay, they, just page eight, in the conclusions, you are aware, though, that even with these lighter counts, that the, that the level of service still degraded from A to B? Is that, that's, that's true.
I do see that, yes, that's correct. And what that means is somebody waits an extra five seconds. And bear in mind, on Woodland, we don't have residential traffic leaving at night. And bear in mind, on Woodland, we don't have residential traffic leaving at night.
I don't understand, I don't understand that at all, since I live a block away. And you do have a lot of residential traffic on Woodland.
At an evening peak hour, 5:30 to 6:00, most people, not everyone, most people are returning home. And therefore, they wouldn't be on that Woodland Avenue approach.
Okay, we'll disagree on that. So let me ask you this, have you personally visited the site?
Yes.
Have you driven up Woodland towards Chatham? Where you get to the stop sign at the top of the hill?
Traveling east toward the train station?
Well, yes, traveling up, well, I guess that's north. North on Woodland towards Chatham, and you get to the top of the hill. And on the left is your new building, and on the right is Short Hills Fuel.
I haven't looked at it in that detail. This is a study of this particular site and these environs.
Okay, but I'm just asking if you've ever driven up there and stopped at that stop sign and tried to look to the right towards the train station?
Are you suggesting at Woodland Avenue, at the gas station, looking to the right? Is that your concern?
That's my concern, yes.
Okay.
I've driven there a million times. I wanted to know if you've ever done it?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so there's, you know, there's parking spaces in front of Short Hills Fuel there on the right?
Correct.
And there, if I could tell you, the first, the parking space is nine feet away from the crosswalk. Would you agree or disagree with me, the closest parking space?
I would not, in that they have a driveway, which I assure you is more than nine feet, plus the radius of the curve itself. So I suspect that that nearest parking space is at least 15 feet, if not 25 feet, from the crosswalk.
Well, right, in the New Jersey statute, it has to be 25 feet away, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you've ever gone up there, and have you had trouble? I know when you get to that and you look to your right, you can't see around those two cars that are parked in front of Short Hills Fuel.
I can say that that's a condition that is endemic to the corner, and it has, I'll say, nothing to do with the application. If there's a concern by the borough council or police department that site distance is in any way constrained or compromised, then by borough ordinance, they would implement a no-parking standard. But because of the opening for the Short Hills Fuel exit driveway, there's enough of a gap in traffic that one can see approaching vehicles coming, I'll say, toward the intersection or away from the train station. So I understand your concern. It is a condition that is prevalent in any downtown area, whether it's Short Hills, Summit, Westfield, on-street parking has inherent issues, I'll say, with regard to site distance, which is why the motor vehicle code specifies a certain distance from crosswalks and intersections, fire hydrants and such. So I understand your concern, but the applicant didn't create that. And certainly, the borough has, excuse me, the township has the means to regulate that.
Okay, yeah, and my concern would be with the admitted increase in traffic. You just, it's the law of averages. I would think that, you know, you have more chances, more traffic means more chances of not seeing and darting out of that intersection. But I don't have any further questions. Thanks, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We are approaching 10:30, which is when we like to call these meetings for, I think, everybody's mental benefit. But we do still have questions, and I feel like now we've got this into the same cycle that happened with Mr. Minnow last time, where the testimony hands and the questions have to carry. But I wanted to know, would you, Mr. Inglisino, have Mr. Dean available?
Yes. Yes, of course. We'll have Mr. Dean available.
Okay, and thank you. We spoke earlier, I spoke to Mr. Bouzak to potentially identify some dates that work for him, because I know he has some upcoming conflicts, and I know we have some hearings already scheduled for upcoming meetings. So Eileen, and Ed, I believe one date that we had circulated was Wednesday, March 31st, as one of our next dates that worked for you and Paul Phillips.
That's correct.
Because it's not a first.
What about the 17th? You mean a special meeting, another special meeting?
So the 17th does not work for Ed? If I'm correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
And April 7?
April 7 doesn't work for.
And also, just in the sense of trying to, you know, get their application heard, you know, I know it's February, and then to talk about a month out. Mr. Inglisino, is that amenable to you? I know we're just throwing that date out there.
Mr. Dean?
Is that the 31st? There are a lot of days thrown out.
Yes, Wednesday.
March 31st, which is a Wednesday, is the.
I think it's the fifth Wednesday.
That's, that's great. That's fine with me, thank you.
We'll make that work.
Great.
And Mr. Inglisino, excuse me, you, I know you have one more witness, your planner. Do you know if he is available? Because I would hope that we'd be able to get his testimony in as well.
I understand. I don't know at this moment, but I'll know tomorrow. But I think we can assume for the moment that he will be.
Okay, great.
And I just want to mention to members of our board, it falls during Passover, but it's not on the first or second night or the final night, it's just midway. So hopefully, that wouldn't create any conflicts for individual. Okay. Thank you all. Ed, it's not that I haven't had practice, but remind me, would I have to state that we would, do I have to get a motion in a second, or I would just make a statement that would carry it?
I think, I think we should, do we have consensus from the board? Or do we have any objection from the board to have the special meeting? Since it is a special meeting on March 31st at 7:30, is that? I think you had already asked that, and I didn't see anyone unmuting. So I guess that means that it's over.
Right, and I think I'll also state, I mean, I don't know yet, and I'll work with Eileen, but if it's the case that you're not available, you know, one week, and we don't have any other applications, we may have a case of a canceled, you know, canceled regular meeting, but a scheduled special meeting to accommodate schedules.
Okay, so I think, I think, given that, Madam Chair, I think it's just a matter of announcing that this application will be carried to March 31st, 2021. At 7:30 PM, it will be utilizing the same Zoom technology, and I believe, Eileen, the same Zoom number, same Zoom information to access the meeting as we have now. But it will be on the website, is that correct?
Yes.
And that we know further notice given by the applicant for that, for that meeting.
Correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate it. Okay. That said, we would make a motion to pause tonight's meeting? Does anybody want to make such a motion?
Please unmute.
I'll make a motion.
David. And a second. Thanks, Jorge. Okay, so tonight's meeting is completed at 10:30 PM. We will see you all when we see you all next, depending on when you're required to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, well, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.